You turn it on? Jose, is it on?
Are you on the, on the, on the team?
Yes. I can't hear them. Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning, Laura.
Council, will you turn on your camera so we can determine a quorum? Okay, Mayor, we have a quorum.
Okay, let's begin, Laura.
Okay, good morning. This is a meeting of the El Paso City Council for Tuesday, August 11th, 2020. It is 9:01 a.m. We continue with a video conference telephonic conference formats for this meeting due to the pandemic. Mayor Margot is present and presiding. We begin the meeting with roll call. Mayor Pro Tim Schwartzby.
Present.
Representative Anello.
Present.
Hernandez.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Salcido.
Present.
Rodriguez.
Here.
I had to text Law and Order because I didn't know what happened with.
Rivera.
Yeah.
We had a long time ago.
Let's move.
Liz Araga. Representative Liz Araga, are you on the line, ma'am? Okay, she hasn't joined yet. Mayor, we do have a quorum.
All right, let's begin.
Okay, this brings us to the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda will be considered by City Council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion unless separate discussion is requested by council members. Prior to the vote, members of the audience may ask questions regarding items on the consent agenda. When the vote has been taken, if an item has not been called out for separate discussion, the item has been approved. Council may, however, reconsider any item at any time during the meeting.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. Let's vote.
There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. On that motion, Mayor Pro Tim Schwartzby.
Aye.
Representative Anello.
No.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Salcido.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Rivera.
Aye.
Liz Araga.
I apologize, I was having technical difficulties, so I just barely got on. On the consent agenda, was item 3.1 removed from it or?
No, it's included.
Okay, no.
Thank you. The motion passes with six affirmative votes. Representatives Anello, Liz Araga voting nay, the remainder of council voting aye, the motion does pass. That brings us to the introduction of ordinances on page three, item 4.1.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to.
So moved. Is there a second? Did I hear a second?
Second.
Mayor, I'm so sorry. I would like to make, make a motion to reconsider the consent agenda.
Thank you.
So I'm going to reconsider the consent agenda.
Yeah.
Don't the items have to be seconded or first by somebody that voted in favor?
She voted in favor of it.
I voted in favor of it.
What is the second?
The second, you're probably correct, Mayor Pro Tim. The second needs to come from someone who voted for it.
I don't know that that's true, but I am on the prevailing side, so the second needs to come from. And, and you know, so this is an important item, so I have some questions and I'd like to get some clarification, so if my colleagues could give me the courtesy to do that.
I'll second it. I'd like some more clarification on it.
All right, let's vote on whether we're going, we're going to reconsider.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second to reconsider the consent agenda. On that motion, Mayor Pro Tim Schwartzby.
Aye.
Representative Anello.
Aye.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Salcido.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Rivera.
Aye.
Thank you. Liz Araga.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. We're back on the consent agenda.
Is there a motion to approve? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second? And we'll have discussion.
Second.
Second.
Okay, where's the discussion? Let's go. Representative Hernandez.
Thank you, and I'm so sorry to my colleagues. I was, I was not prepared. My, my devices were, were off. So I'm sorry for, for the mix-up, but I do have questions for the planning department, Mr. Philip and Kevin. As, as you are aware, the ETJ is when, is within the city's purview. And I have always had concerns about annexation and anything that happens in the ETJ. And so some of my questions are related to why, why this is coming to, to us in the resolution? And why isn't, can we, can we go through the presentation? Because I see there's a presentation. Can we go through that first?
And item 3.1 is a resolution stating that the City Council of the City of El Paso makes no objection to the establishment of one or more public improvement districts by the El Paso County with respect to the development of property located in El Paso County owned by Rancho Rial Land Holdings LLC.
IT, can you bring up the presentation for 3.1, please?
Mayor, Mayor Council, good morning. This is Philip. It's a planning inspection. Before the presentation, I just want to clarify something. This is not an annexation of a property into the city.
Excuse me, Philip. It's not a what?
This is not an annexation. This, this resolution is not annexing this property into the city.
Correct.
Correct. Okay, if we can go through the presentations and then I'll follow up with my questions.
Okay, good morning, Mayor and Council. Kevin Smith with Planning Inspections for the record. IT, if you can go to the next slide, please. This is regards to a project being developed in the county. I'll show you the development in a moment, but includes future residential, commercial, parks, and a future school site. In order to finance the construction and maintenance of the infrastructure, the owner proposes to create a public improvement district. As you're aware, a public, a public improvement district, or PID, is a special district that provides additional attack that is only assessed within the PID boundaries for the construction and maintenance of specific improvements. If you go to the next slide, please. It is, the area that is being considered is generally located east of John Hayes and south of Montana. This slide here shows its relationship within the city limits. It is located in our ETJ, but it does, but the, the city limits specifically just to the, is located just to the east of Tim Floyd. Next slide, please. This shows the proposed plan. This was approved, a land study that was approved by the City Plan Commission in 2018. It contains a variety of developments, predominantly residential, with commercial sites, park locations throughout the development, ponds, as well as a future school site. This will have to comply with all the subdivision requirements found in our subdivision code. Next slide, please. And again, the request is that the City Council makes no objection to the establishment of a PID for this land that would be developed or created by the county. This does not create the PID. It's just stating that the council, it makes no objection. With that, that completes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Representative Hernandez? You're muted.
On slide five, the proposed plan, who, who, whose plan is this? Is this something that came out of the east side master plan or can you elaborate a little bit about the plan?
So this was a plan that, this was a plan that was approved by the City Plan Commission. This was proposed by the developer. It was vetted through various city departments and approved by the City Plan Commission, so that it is currently what is proposed to be developed.
Okay, and those two major arterial roads that kind of cut through the center and then at the end, are those new roads that they will be building?
Yeah, they would have to follow all the subdivision requirements. It would include the, I believe, the extension of Pebble Hills and Edgemere. Edgemere is specifically the one that would bisect the, the development, and they would have to follow the subdivision requirements which would include the construction of those roadways.
Okay, so they would, they would complete the extension on those intersections?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Okay, and whose responsibility is to maintain those roads after they're constructed?
If they were located within the city of El Paso, they'd be the city's responsibility. Typically, they would be dedicated to the city. Here, they would be in the county, so they would be the county responsibility unless a, a entity was created for the, like a mud was created to maintain those roadways.
Okay, so possibly a county or a mud or a PID which was.
PID, correct.
Correct, okay, so what is the PID going to pay for?
With that, I would defer to the applicant. I think Mr. Doug Schwartz is, is here, but the, the state code does specify certain criteria or certain items that may be maintained by the PID, so.
And before we get to questions from, from the applicant, I still have some questions for staff, so I'll, I'll hold on for a second.
If I may, I would like to answer that question. All the improvements are going to be paid by the developer, and that's the reason the PID has been requested to pay for all those improvements that will be done.
Okay, so will, is this within our impact fee boundaries?
No, ma'am. It's not within the city. It's within our ETJ.
No, 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 that's not, that's not my question. Let me rephrase. The, the impact fee development area, is this, is this development in the impact fee development area?
No.
Okay, so who's paying for the water and the waste and, the wastewater and stormwater infrastructure?
The developer is going to be paying for all of that. The cost of the infrastructure, extension of infrastructure, and construction of infrastructures will be paid by the developer, and that's the reason the PID is being created.
Okay, so.
To finance, to finance all that improvements.
Okay, because this is a model I haven't seen before. Typically, like a mud is created to pay for the wastewater and stormwater infrastructure, but if I'm understanding correctly, looking at this map, and I don't have the impact fee map in front of me, are you, are you saying that they will not be paying impact fees for this development? And are you 100% sure?
The impact fees is paid to the city. In this case, this property resides in the county and it's going to be in the county for perpetuity. It's not going to be annexed into the city.
Correct, but in some development areas that are in the east side, will they be paying the county, or excuse me, the El Paso Water Utility or the county impact fees?
They will be paying the county impact fees and El Paso Water Utility Connection.
Okay, so, so then the PID is not paying for the development, the impact fee, and the utility will be paying for the stormwater and wastewater infrastructure?
So the El Paso Water Impact Fees will be applied in this case.
Okay.
So they will be subject to that.
Okay, and that's my question, Mr. Ituwi, that's my question, so there, the, the impact fees, as you know, I brought this item up early in the year. We don't have enough impact fees to pay for east side sprawl, east side development. And can you explain, Mr. Smith, what an impact fee is and how ratepayers are paying for the difference of the impact fees when it's not enough to cover the development?
If I may, that's, well, the impact fees that you're referring to was the one that was brought before council, I believe, about a year ago. So the impact fees is intended to cover the cost of line extension and construction infrastructures to serve a particular development or areas of subdivision. In this case, the impact field, impact fees is still applicable, that EPW will apply to this property. So that's going to cover the cost of the infrastructure that is going to be built by, by the developer to serve the residents of this area.
Okay, so if there's not enough generated from impact, whose responsibility is to pay for the wastewater and stormwater infrastructure?
The cost of paying for infrastructure for wastewater and water is still borne by the, by the developer. And that's an agreement that is reached between the developer and EPW.
Right, and, and there's, here's, here's what the problem is with, with that. A, this is not an annexation, so they're, they are not, they are not, they're not paying a water rate. They become retail to use water services. And B, it's out in the county, and so there's no taxes generated to the city, yet the, the, it's right, it's abiding our boundaries. It's, it's right, it's abiding, I think District 5 and District 6. The unfortunate thing here is that our, our ratepayers, our water ratepayers are going to have to pay for that infrastructure through the impact fees because there's simply not enough money generated through impact fees, and this is something that I continuously bring up, that we should not, people from the Lower Valley, people from Mission Valley, from downtown should not be paying through their water rates, new development, the impact fees, and it's not covering the cost of the construction. So we have to use our dollars that we pay in our water bill. We use those dollars to pay for that infrastructure, yet they will not, there is no cost benefit analysis being completed based on this presentation. I'd like to know why we're not considering an annexation for this, for this great development. And we're going to be responsible for all of these, all of these folk that live right, right in, really close to our boundaries. And so I'm, I'm just a little confused as to why we're going this direction when El Paso ratepayers will have to pay for the stormwater and the difference of the cost.
So, Mr. Hernandez, a couple of things. The rates in the county is actually 15% higher than the city limit. And number two, the question you asked about the annexation of this property into the city. We, the applicant or the owner of the property, applied for annexation, I believe, about two years ago, 20 half years ago. We could not come to terms with the development agreement as to what the developer will be responsible for and what the city will be responsible for. So given the fact that we couldn't come to terms, we decided not to annex the property into the city.
Right, but I still need to understand what is going to be the cost to ratepayers, and that's 100% within our purview? And so I really need that answer because it would be, it would be really irresponsible for us to approve this without understanding what the unintended consequences and costs would be to the ratepayer. What about fire, emergency, like, I know there's a new library that's being developed there. We have an emergency center in the, a new police station that's being constructed in the east side. Who, like, what, who, who are they going to use for those services out there?
It is my understanding that those, those entities that lie with, outside of the city limits, they would not receive those city benefits, so they would be serviced by the county.
Right, but there's going to be a school, and we have a new library and new public facilities that are going to be right next door. So, so this is under the understanding that none of those residents are going to come into the city to utilize our services that the city provides. And, and that's simply just, you know, not true. The reality is, is that, what is it, the number of homes, is it 4,000 homes being built?
That's correct.
4,000 homes that are going to be built, they're going to come to the city, to the far east side, to utilize services, yet they're not paying their fair share for city services. And so, again, a reason why either there should be an annexation, or we, I really need to understand where is the, where's the east side master plan play into this? How does it play into this new development? Have we done an alignment to see if, if this actually adhered to our vision with the master plan?
Okay, Representative Hernandez, you asked several questions. I think the first one you asked was the, in terms of the ratepayers. That's a question that we have to pose to El Paso Water, and they may be able to give us, so we can take that offline and come back to you and give you that information. Number two, are they going to be able to come to use a city facility? You're right, they may have opportunity to travel to the city, within the city limit, to use city facilities. How does this play into the city east side master plan? As you know, the city east side master plan is still in the works, and this is part of the area that they're also looking at. So those are the questions that you asked, and I don't have full information for you now. I can go back and look at the east side master plan and see how that relates to this property.
Mr. Cortinez, how much?
Representative.
El Paso pay for the east side?
Representative Hernandez, you're at 10 minutes, ma'am. I defer to the mayor. I believe there's other speakers.
Can we just answer that question? Can we just answer that question really quickly? What is, what is the cost of the east side master plan that the City of El Paso paid?
Mayor, City Council, Senator, the city engineer, the budget for, for that project was about $500,000.
Right, so we've used, we used half a million dollars to better plan the east side, yet we're going to approve something that doesn't have a clear alignment with the east side master plan, a clear understanding what the cost is going to be to ratepayers. We don't know whose responsibility it is to provide city services to include quality of life, libraries, infrastructure, street infrastructure, stormwater infrastructure. We don't, I don't have a clear assessment, and this is, this is unacceptable. So we need to get these clear answers so that we can be held accountable to our constituents about sprawling and development in the far east side.
Thank you, Representative Hernandez. I will now go to Representative Liz Araga and then Mayor Pro Tim.
Good morning. Yes, hi, Philip and Kevin. Good morning to everyone. I have a question. If the city were not to offer this proposed statement, you know, of non-objection, what would me, what would that mean practically for the county's process of establishing the PID?
So.
So this doesn't affect, it's not, this is, there's no cost to the city. This is just allowing the city to say that the city will not object to the county creating the PID. All the costs will be borne by the developer, and the, the reason for the PID is to be able to create the financing structure to finance all those improvements that are going to be necessary to serve the resident of this area.
Yeah, let me, let me just interject if I can. One other, one other point, if it's okay, Representative Liz Araga, is that, is to make it clear, and Philip made this point earlier, is we worked in good faith on trying to work through an annexation agreement with the developer going back some time, but we were unable to, to reach that agreement. And as everybody knows, you know, we can't force annexation. So we didn't come to terms with that, and then the developer made a determination to try to work this through a PID, so, just to make sure that that's clear.
Mr. Ituwi, you know, you keep mentioning the applicant. Does this resolution have an applicant, and what application has he filed with the city?
So this resolution has an applicant and the developer, Mr. Doug Schwartz. So this resolution has an applicant and the developer, Mr. Doug Schwartz, I think is on the line as well. So the the this is a request to plan an inspection to put a an item on the city council agenda to allow the council to vote on creation of the PID.
Okay, well, it's still not clear to me. What would what would it mean if we don't pass this? What's it going to mean for the county's process if we don't pass this resolution?
What it means for the county process that the development may not be able to move forward to finance all the necessary infrastructures that will be required for this 1,000 acre. And also, the the street standards may not be appropriate at this time because they may have to build according to the city to county standard. But in this case, when they come to us for subdivision improvements, which we have to approve the subdivision improvement in the city, we will be requiring, you know, over with pavement of streets and and roadways that will be appropriate or consistent with our development standards.
Okay, I have another question. How often and under what circumstances would the city complain about a county-created PID? Has that happened before?
Not to my recollection, ma'am.
So the county would not allow the developer to move forward if we don't approve this resolution? Is that what you're telling me?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Representative Lozarga, could you repeat that question? You broke mine.
Oh, okay. I my final question was, so the county wouldn't be allowed, so the county's not going to move forward with this PID if we don't approve the resolution?
That's correct.
Okay, Mayor Protem?
Thank you.
You're within your rights not to approve it or approve it.
Thanks, Mayor. So just a couple of questions. How does this align with the east side master plan? I don't know if the applicant and staff want to answer that.
The east side master plan goes beyond this property and, you know, takes a look at what those those land uses are in terms of infrastructures as well. So this will be part of the east side master plan, where we look at, you know, road infrastructure, road alignment, and infrastructures like water, sewer, other facilities, schools, and libraries. But in this case, the developer will be providing all those infrastructures, parks, amenities, schools, and other library facilities as well on this property.
Does it align with what the east side master plan calls for this specific parcel?
The the east side master plan, as you know, started about two years ago. So this development, when it came into the city, met the requirement of the planning parcel for development in the east side. So that builds on the east side master plan builds on the the planning parcel as well. So it's consistent with that.
So it is. So is it consistent and aligns with the east side master plan?
The east side master plan has not been completed yet. I believe so far, this is consistent with the east side master plan. There may be some areas where the east side plan may recommend better infrastructure and better coordinated development.
Okay. What is the advantage of a pit to the city of El Paso?
As it stands today, there's no cost to the city. The advantages to the city, that the city will not be paying for for police, fire, and also those maintaining all the streets.
So this pit is going to pay for its own, put some fire, or that's going to be handled through the county?
That will be handled through the county. And I think Mr. Mr. Schwartz has his hands up.
Yeah, great. Mr. Schwartz, what in terms of the one of the issues with with some of the county and the ETJ is that the code, the amount of improvements, the way the streets are constructed in the county and in the ETJ doesn't align with city code and city ordinances and city standards. Can you talk a little bit about your intention and plans and intent with with this project in terms of streets and parks and other sort of city standards and code as it applies to to this project?
Sure. Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Doug Schwartz with Brunchos Real Land Holdings, the applicant. First, let me start by, we did try to annex this, as Philip said, and we did file a land use study that's required with the city as part of the development process, which was approved by Planning Commission and is in line with with all the standards of the city. Part of the land use study, we do a traffic impact analysis. It determines what size of infrastructure is attributable and necessitated for our development. So it's if if this was annexed into the city, the city would have to participate in the roads, or the roads would be built to smaller standards. Not being annexed, it's really the same thing, but the county doesn't have a vehicle for financing the over with pavement. You talk about the El Paso Water Utilities. A long time ago, the El Paso Water Utilities filed what's called a CCN that as they wanted to provide service to this area. So that's a process through the TCEQ. When that happened, the the water utilities, it was required to service this area. And yes, it's in the east side impact area, and these residents not only will have to pay impact fees, but will also have a 15% higher higher rate being in the county. Fire and EMS are handled by the Emergency Services District, which is a separate taxing entity. And they they handle that. Schools, I'm sorry, it's in the Clint School District, which, you know, school districts don't necessarily align with city limits. So it's in a school district. Schools will be handled in the same manner before. There's already a school existing. Development's already happened here. This is a point I wanted to make as we're moving forward. We've already filed our first residential plat. The lots are sold. Houses should be beginning soon. There's already a school existing, an idea charter school is already existing here. Edgemere is already built. We did that with participation agreement with the county using the CMRA funds. So development's happening with or without this. And I did want to mention city parks. As part of the development ordinance, these actually are city parks in this area because the ordinance requires that we dedicate parkland to the city of El Paso in these in these areas. So all the the parks you see on this plan will be city parks and maintained by the city. And that's something that, you know, the city may want to reconsider in the future. But right now, these will be city maintained parks in this area in the county. The only reason for this action is the PID is just another financing tool to help pay for improvements that the county can't pay for, either because they don't have the ordinance making authority to pay for them, or they don't have the budget to pay for them. And the main component is that for is for the full width of the roadways. So the county, the creation of a PID is a very long process, very expensive process. And the county doesn't want to go through this because the state law allows that the the city can can object to this process after it's complete. So they don't want to go through this whole process only to have the city object to the process. And that's really the only reason we're here. The if this doesn't get approved, the county will probably not move forward with the PID, which means the streets will probably be built to less lanes as required, as shown on the major thoroughfare plan. And later, through some kind of financing, I don't know how, either through the CMRA or if the city annexes, those roads will have to be brought up to standard. So there is a big benefit to the city to to approve this and to let the county move forward with this PID, so the streets do get paid for this. And I do want to mention that a PID, again, is just a financing tool. It's going to be a tax on these residents only to help pay for the improvements that affect this area. So in effect, it's it's an impact fee area just for these residents, just for this area. A financing tool, not not much different than a municipal utility district, not much different from other from like a municipal management district, which you recently approved for northeast El Paso. It is different than a TIRS, is a TIRS is an incremental tax that doesn't create an additional tax. This is actually an additional tax to help finance the extra improvements. But I will be happy to answer any questions. Again, this development is moving forward, and you should see houses starting out there pretty soon.
Mayor Protem, if you finish your questions? Just 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 a couple of clarifying questions. So you mentioned that the the impact fees from the city will be paid for by this area?
Yes. Yeah, this the water utilities impact fees, which currently is the only impact fee ordinance the city has right now is a water utility impact fee.
Yeah. And the parks and streets will be built to city standards as well, even though it's in
Or of city standards, because that's one of the the great things about the PID is that we can use funds to actually add extra improvements to those parks, such as extra playgrounds or anything else that's that's necessary, add hike and bike trails, things like that, that usually aren't financed from the city. They're usually financed from the developer or the residents.
And your your intention is to build the parks, amenities, and and streets at or above city standards with this?
In the ETJ, we have to follow city standards. Again, the only thing is that there is a state law, proportionality law, that says that we only have to build extra improvements that don't serve our area, which would be the extra width of those streets. And that's really the only thing we're talking about is the the extra pavement to build the full width of those streets.
And they'll have sidewalks and
Sidewalks, landscaping, hiking bike trails.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. All right. Representative Salcedo?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a few questions to Etteway. I just wanted to really know if if this project will be built completely to city standards in in all facets.
Yes, ma'am. They will have to come to the city for subdivision approval. And at that time, we'll be applying all our rules and regulations for Title 19.
And how many libraries and parks will be built?
I don't have that information. Mr. Schwartz, mine.
I don't think there's any libraries planned because I don't think the the county provides libraries. But parks, it's on the plan. I would have to count them on the the master plan that's part of the presentation from the planning department. But it's it's above city standards for parks, as far as the amount of dedicated parkland will be over what's required by the city.
If I might respond to that question, as per the staff report for the land study that was approved by the City Planning Commission in 2018, there were nine parks, which totaled over 40 some odd acres of parkland. That would have met the the parkland requirements of the subdivision code.
And I did hear that there's going to be some streets that are going to be built by the county. Which streets are those, again?
Nothing will probably be built by the county. There was Edgemere was built with participation agreement with the county. But everything will be built by the developer and the additional roadway width, if we do get a pit approved, will be paid for the by the PID, by the residents. And there's an additional tax.
Okay, so you you need the PID in order to build these streets?
To build the full width of the streets, correct, above and beyond what's required by the traffic impact analysis.
Okay. And is this a this is back to Etteway? Is this a property that can be annexed in the future?
That's correct, ma'am. It's within the annexation path.
Okay, so just so I get some clarification. So this is something, a project that's currently going to get built without the support or support for it. So in order in order for this to be something that can be annexed in the future, it is in the best interest to support it today, since the PID will be taking care of some connections of some streets and also be building the parks to the city standard. Is that correct?
That's correct, ma'am.
Thank you.
Representative Rivera?
Thank you, Mayor. And going back to what Mr. Schwartz said, is he still on? Mr. Schwartz, can you can you tell us again on the on the roads that that are going to be built out there? You're saying they're going to be wider than what the normal norm is in the city? Or are you going to are you going to build them adequately so that you don't have to go back in there and if commercial goes in there, you know, that they have to get torn up again and 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 expand it?
Yes. So all the roads that are shown on the major thoroughfare plan with the city will be built. And the right of way will be dedicated. With a PID, if we're allowed to proceed with the PID and the the city doesn't object and the county does approve it, we still have another process to go through with the county. All the roads will be built to the full width that's specified on the major thoroughfare plan, which Edgemere is already built. But there are several, there's another major arterial, there's some minor arterials. So they will all be built to the full width if there's a pit. If there's not a PID, you will have the full right of way, but the streets may only be two to four lanes.
Narrower than than what we expect. And you're also talking about Mottwood as well, too, right? Pebble Hills, the three major arteries out there?
On there, Mottwood is not in there. Mottwood is is south of this and is in the city limits.
Yeah, just I want to clarify really quickly, though, just to make sure the council understands that that state law, I know that there was a comment about the annexation path. But as you all know, state law does not allow for forced annexations. So if it's something to think about for the council in terms of state legislation, you may want to think about that in the future. But but right now, even though it may be on this on the annexation path, that doesn't mean it's going to get annexed in the future. So so everybody's clear on that.
So so what my my follow up question to that, Mr. Schwartz, was going to be that when you did this development, when you first started projecting it, did you take into consideration the fact that on of the fact of of growth in that area? And and so we have major traffic jams out there. Our charitable road is being used as a way out. And so did you take all that into consideration with this plan?
Yes, we did. It's it's again, it follows the major thoroughfare plan. In fact, with the PID, we could actually build some roads where, let's say, we were had a boundary with another property owner, and half the road is his and half the road is ours. This will allow us to actually build both sides of the road because it can be financed differently. But yes, no, a part of this, it goes through the same city planning. The plat that's already been filed of record went through the same city process that a city plat does within the city limits. And all all traffic's considered. A lot of the problems out there, bottlenecks created, the textod intersections, like at Loop 375 in Montana. And there are projects in the works to help alleviate those. Again, a big one would be getting Mottwood all the way through. But there the the traffic that's created by our area is handled by the the roadways we build. And they're built over and above because of our previous annexation agreements with the city. So they are built to handle the entire amount of traffic, including, as Kevin can tell you, there's offsite improvements that we pay the city for that go out several miles. So if we affect an intersection, let's say, a mile and a half away, that may have a four way stop sign today, but our traffic impact analysis says, well, you're adding traffic to this, and now there's going to be a stoplight required. So now we have to pay the city our proportionate share of that stoplight. So it goes, you know, above just to this area. It actually reaches well out with the proportionality laws of the state of Texas.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that response. Also, one more time, could you repeat that about the impact fees? The resident owner will pay that? Is that what you said?
Yes. So so when the the water utilities originally, we had applied to create a mud out here. This was This was at least a decade ago, and the water utilities came in and said, no, we want to control this area and we want to provide the water and sewer to it. So they filed with the TCEQ certificate of need and necessity that basically requires them to provide service once that's filed. Now, we have to pay for all the extensions. I know Representative Hernandez says this is sprawl and leapfrog, but it's not. It's immediately adjacent to existing infrastructure. We're hooking up to infrastructure we've already built. And there are very few impact fee improvements in this area. There's maybe every mile, there might be a big bane or something, and those are generally built to serve areas outside of this. The developer generally pays for 100% on the onsite improvements. And those, it's built into the cost of the lots, so the residents do pay their own way out here.
Thank you. And and of course, you know, every every question is 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 legit. And I I can understand Representative Hernandez's concern as well as ours. Having worked that area and you knowing the fact that it's really a traffic, a major traffic jam out there, we we've been trying to get some kind of relief out there. And so with this build, that eventually be serviced by the Sheriff's Department, if it's out in the county, do you? I lost my question here. I apologize. Last question here. That PID, that PID, like you said, is very important to your development, correct?
Correct, yes. It it lets us build it, you know, a nicer subdivision and help finance those those improvements without having unaffordable lots.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
And and I do want to mention that we have met with the Sheriff's Department and, you know, their headquarters is just a couple of miles from this. And they welcome this because it helps them access the areas further east, the Montana vista areas, where they do have some issues. And so they they actually welcome this development and are happy to serve it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
You bet. Representative Hernandez is asked to speak again. Are there any other council members who have not spoken that would like to speak? All right, Representative Hernandez and then Representative Lozarga.
Hi, thank you. Mr. Schwartz, thank you for being here to answer questions. This is definitely very helpful. The traffic impact analysis that you referenced to earlier, what year did you conduct that in?
Jesus, I'll have to go back and look. I think it was a couple of years ago when we first had our land study approved. It may have been updated at one point, but it was probably, it's probably about two years old.
Okay, and I and I would, I would assert that traffic in this area has increased exponentially from two years ago to now. And so I think it's really important that that traffic impact analysis is updated because I don't, I don't believe that there's enough major or minor arterial roads or collector roads to help, and I'm definitely not an engineer, just kind of going based on our neighborhoods that we have today. I see block after block after block without any major or minor arterial road. But that's not your fault. That is the fault of our ordinances. Our ordinances, like the major thoroughfare plan that you referenced to, isn't sufficient enough to help with sprawling. That is why, and I want to remind council, that is why we resurrected the east side master plan. Because we wanted this, our staff and our planners to go back to the drawing board, to make policy recommendations that can help support massive sprawling like we, like we're seeing today and and we've seen in the past decade in the far east side. Our subdivision code needs to be enhanced. Our annexation fees policies need to be re-looked. Our park fees need to be re-looked, and most importantly, our impact fees are not generating enough enough funding to pay for developments like this. And so you're absolutely right. The homeowner is going to pay impact fees, but if it's not enough to cover the total cost, then that bill gets footed to the ratepayers. And that is my concern here, is that it's been over 10 years since we've increased the the impact fee. And we have already seen presentations where those fees should be increased dramatically so that we can protect our ratepayers from having to pay for new development. That is not in the city limits. We are going to be paying for the maintenance of parks. That are not in the city limits, but our rate, our taxpayers are going to have to pay for these parks and the maintenance. But the problem here is that there is no alignment with the east side master plan. We have a lot of work to do with our codes and our ordinances. And Mr. Tuohy said, there is no cost to the city. But let's talk about what the costs are to the taxpayer and to our ratepayers. The ratepayer is going to have to pay for the stormwater and wastewater infrastructure. The El Paso taxpayer is going to have to pay for libraries and for parks that they're, that these residents are going to pay for. The taxpayers are going to have to pay for the maintenance of the parks. So those are facts. I'm not making that up. And I think that's why it's really important that we need to continue to pressure CID and Mr. Gonzalez to get us that east side master plan, so we can be well informed if there is an alignment with the east side master plan, because the ETJ is 100% within our pathway to annexation. Yes, sir?
I would like to, if I may, I think you're you're absolutely on the right path. However, I think in relation to the points you're making, I think a better course would be for us to have the ability to have power over our ETJ and be able to have more authority on annexation. I think when when the state made that law and and it prevented cities from having that ability, a developer just has to disagree with us. And then we are at the mercy of attempting to get the best deal possible to get better streets in this case, so that they align with our with our arteries. It it is not the best direction. I don't disagree with you. However, I think that if you just increase impact fees, it will encourage leapfrogging. It will encourage this type of action to take place more often.
Right, and I think, I mean, you know, Mr. Schwartz, I'm sorry if if I if I come across very aggressive, but you know, this has nothing to do with your development. This has to do with a conversation that we've been having for years about really making sure that we are protecting the ratepayer and making sure that we are protecting the El Paso taxpayer to avoid, to, you know, to be really strategic with these type of developments.
It doesn't have to do with this development, but it has to do with every element, but it has to do with every element.
And and so I I really, for me, in order to support this, I really need to see additional information. I need to see a cost benefit analysis to the El Paso taxpayer. I need to see an updated traffic impact study to make sure that we are accounting for new development with the the new streets and and new development and new thoroughways and new Brio and new public transit. There's a lot going on in the east side that we're now having a conversation about. It's not strategically happening for for our growth, and and we know that we're having growth. And we want to be very strategic about it, and that's why council pushed for that east side master plan. And so for me, I think it would be just just not prudent for for me to support this unless I can, I can assure my constituents who have to pay their their water rates that they're, they're not going to be paying for new development because the impact fee is not covering the total cost. I need to, I need to understand why we have to pay, we have to maintain city parks. I'd like to see the kind of parks that you have planned. Are they going to have, are they going to meet the standards? Are they going to have shade? Are you going to be putting shade, are you going to be putting playgrounds? Are you going to have all the amenities at these parks? You have mentioned that the county has no plans to build libraries, but there's nothing that prohibits the developer from building public facilities like libraries. And so possibly using the PID to to pay for quality of life amenities. And so that that's specifically why we approve the east side master plan, so that we can be more creative and work in tandem with developers who want to to see to see growth. And I know that you want to work with the city to to ensure that it lines with our ordinances and our subdivision plans and every other plan that we have. Unfortunately, our plans are old. They're dated. They need to be updated. And now that annexation is now on a voluntary basis, we we need to work with you in order to go on a path for annexation for the future. I'm not seeing any of that today, and it's it's 4,000 homes we're talking about. I think it's going to inadvertently and unintentionally impact traffic even even more. And it's problematic because these these folks are not going to be paying city taxes, and those city taxes are important so that we can maintain those services. And so for that reason, I just wanted to be, you know, honest and and open with you that I have a lot of concerns with developments like this in the far east side. And in our ETJ, I won't be supporting this today, but I'm happy to reconsider it. If staff can do, can bring back cost benefit analysis, if the water utility can talk about how we're protecting ratepayers. But I'm not seeing that today, and therefore I cannot support it. But thank you, Mr. Schwartz. I appreciate you being here, giving us more information.
And and I do, I, everybody's entitled to their opinion on on growth and and if it pays for itself. I respectfully disagree with you on a lot of the issues concerning impact fees because we do pay for 100% of the improvements here. A lot of the the bigger improvements, such as water tanks, are going to serve areas far outside of El Paso, such as Montana Vista, and don't necessarily serve just this area. The the city will not be paying for any stormwater. You keep mentioning stormwater, but the stormwater is the county's responsibility. They will be maintaining stormwater. Really, the only two things we're talking about here are parks, which it's in the city ordinance that we are required to dedicate parks to the city in the ETJ within the growth path. We're fine with making them county parks, having them supported by the PID. If if the city doesn't want to continue on with that, we'd be very open to an ordinance change. We feel that we could actually build the parks better without parks oversight, because we could program the parks better for the area that we're building as far as age groups and activities go. So really, it's there, there are no costs to the city. This is a benefit to the city, that if the city ever does annex us, they will not have to spend tens of millions of dollars bringing the roadways up to to spec. So we do feel this, this is a a big benefit. It is not sprawl by definition. It's immediately adjacent to existing growth. There's growth happening all over the city, that the city council is a part of. Areas like the the state land that you recently approved a municipal utility district on, the Pasel de la Est area that you approved municipal utility districts on, all happening in the city's ETJ. So this isn't anything different. It's being built to city standards. It's being, it's gone through the same planning processes of everything. Yes, libraries are, you know, that these people will use city services. I mean, there's nothing we can do about that. We made a good faith effort to have this area annexed and weren't able to come to an agreement. As you know, everything else in the area, we did come to an agreement on annexation, and the area is thriving. So we welcome, I'd love to sit down with you and and talk to you about this and talk about growth paying for itself. We believe it does pay for itself.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz.
The impact fee areas, the older areas of the cities use a lot more money than the new areas of the city for maintenance. And I think that the area, the new areas of the city are actually paying for the old areas of the city. So we'd love to sit down and have that discussion.
All right, Representative Lozarga has a question for staff.
Yes, thank you so much. I have a question for Kevin or Philip. Do we have an agreement with Mr. Schwartz that that would ensure that he builds at or above city standards? Is there an agreement in place?
Well, the agreement, the agreement comes in terms of the subdivision approval, and that goes to the City Planning Commission. So all those improvements that Mr. Schwartz just mentioned will be shown on the subdivision plan.
And then with, my second question is, would any change to the approved plan, would they come before city councils, or could it be approved by CPC only?
By CPC. The subdivision is the only applicable. They don't have zoning in the carry. So subdivision plans approval and the improvement plans will be approved by by the carry and the city.
But would it come before city council?
No, no, ma'am.
All right. Thank you, Philip.
You know, I do, I do have a, Representative Lozarga. First, with respect to what was stated before by the other representative regarding other development, I know that the 2012 CIP package, I have to say this because I've said it publicly, but I'll repeat it again, with a lot of streetlights, a lot of public improvement that weren't done with previous developments that had to be done with that CIP package. And so when with never, we don't come to an agreement with a developer who doesn't agree to go to the standards that we need them to go to without this kind of instrument, then we do have to make that up through capital improvements. And that has been the case in the past. So that is a, that is a fact. I know today it was stated by the developer that that they can maintain the the park system. I think we'll make that change as well. Just wanted to make that clear, since that was stated, that we will go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
All right, I think we've covered everything. I just want a one-time quick question for Philip before we vote. Has staff and all overriding committees approved this?
Mayor, this did not have to go to CPC or or any other board. So this is just a request to be placed on city council agenda to approve, not to object to the creation of PID.
Does staff have any concerns with this?
No concerns, sir.
All right, let's vote.
Mayor, may I ask that you take 3.1 separately?
Take 3.1 separately?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's take 3.1 separately.
Okay, so there was a motion and a second to approve Representative Morgan, is is it okay to take 3.1 separately?
Yes.
Mayor Protem, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, on that motion to approve item 3.1, Mayor Protem Schwartzwein.
Yes.
Representative Anello.
No.
Hernandez?
No.
Morgan?
Yes.
Salcido?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
I'm going to vote no, but if I could get further briefing on this, I'd be happy to reconsider it.
So you're voting nay, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Rivera?
Yes.
Lozarga?
No.
Mayor, there's a tie. Do you wish to cast a vote?
Yes.
Thank you. So the motion passes with Mayor Margot breaking the tie. Mayor Margot, Representative Schwartzwein, Morgan, Salcido, Rivera voting aye. Representatives Anello, Hernandez, Rodriguez, Lozarga voting nay. The motion does pass. Can we have a motion to approve 1.1?
So moved. Second.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second to approve item 1.1. Mayor Protem Schwartzwein?
Aye.
Representative Anello?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Salcido?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Lozarga?
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously. The next item is the introduction of ordinances. This is item 4.1.
Sir, a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Let's vote.
There is a motion and a second to approve the first reading of ordinances. This is item 4.1. Mayor Protem Schwartzwein?
Aye.
Representative Anello?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Salcido?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rivera?
Aye.
And Lozarga?
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously. Mayor, do you want to continue on this agenda or recess for the Mass Transit Department Board meeting?
Let's recess for Mass Transit.
May we have a motion to recess?
Motion, motion recess for Mass Transit?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to recess the regular city council meeting to conduct the Mass Transit Department Board meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The regular city council meeting is in recess at 10:04 a.m. Good morning. This is a meeting of the Mass Transit Department Board. It is not 10:04 a.m. Board Chair Margot is present and presiding when we we begin the meeting with roll call. This will be a video conference, teleconference meeting due to the pandemic. Board Member Schwartzwein?
Aye.
Anello?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Morgan, this is a roll call.
Everybody wants to vote.
Morgan?
I vote in a present. Yes, yes.
Salcido?
Present.
Rodriguez?
Here.
Rivera? Lozarga?
Present.
There is a call.
I exist, Mayor. I exist and I'm voting aye.
That brings us to item two on the regular agenda. This is a public hearing on the proposed budget for the Mass Transit Department of the City of El Paso Sun Metro filed by the city manager with the city clerk on July 17th, 2020, which begins on September 1st, 2020 and ends on August 31st, 2021. The public hearing is open at 10:05 a.m.
Is there a motion to approve?
This is a public hearing, Mayor. If anyone wants to speak.
Just public hearing? We don't approve this and then have the hearing? We just have the hearing?
This is just the hearing for today, sir.
Okay. Do we have anybody signed up?
No one has signed up to speak.
Okay, then there's no action then if there's no one signed up to speak. Is that correct?
If I may, Mayor, so there is a motion that we would like Mayor Protem to read, and I can share my screen, Mayor Protem, that'll be helpful. So this is the motions. So it's to close the public hearing and to postpone the final vote on the budget to August 18th, 2020, when you will vote on not only the mass transit, but the city budget as well.
Mayor Protem? Mayor Protem, will you make that motion?
Well, we said to do item 6.1, correct?
Correct. Item 6.1 is on the regular council agenda. This is on the mass transit, and this is a requirement from the transportation code that we do.
Okay, so I need it. So just for clarification, I make this motion twice?
So, yes, sir. It'll be for the mass transit, and you're going to do the same motion for the item 6.1 of the regular agenda.
Thank you for clarifying, sir.
You made the motion, Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I would like to make the motion to close a public hearing regarding mass transit agenda and to postpone the final vote on mass transit budget to August 18th, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second. Second.
If there's no further discussion, let's vote.
We'll have discussion, Mayor.
Okay. Who wishes to speak?
Cassandra. I'm sorry, I haven't.
Representative Anello.
Okay, well, neither of you texted me, so I'm sorry. I didn't have a representative.
Actually, I did text you, Mayor, sorry.
Okay.
I have not. Go ahead, Alex.
Okay, so I just, Robert, do you have a presentation on the impacts of Sun Metro or mass transit in general in the FY '21 budget?
So what we posted is backup with a presentation that was done on July the 6th that outlined not only mass transit department, but also those included in goals 2, 7, and 8. So it was a combined presentation, not specifically related to the mass transit department.
Can you pull the slides that are related to mass transit?
Let me pull up the presentation.
Thank you.
So again, this is the safety for neighborhoods. This is goal 2, 7, and 8, in which Sun Metro is included in this vision block. See, they're included in goal 7. See, overall breakdown for this vision block. This is the source of funding. So you can see here on this slide, goal 7, Sun Metro, overall budget of 70.9 million. Priorities again here at the bottom percent metro, enhancing their current transit system, reassessing bus stop facilities, in which Ellen Smythe has been appointed to oversee the Sun Metro Department here recently. She's done a lot of work in reviewing existing routes. They've already started making modifications to some of those routes. And then again, reviewing the most efficient use of the graph lines, especially the CARES fund. So they did receive a little over 41 million. And so they've already come up with a plan how they're going to utilize those funds, not only to address the current year, but FY 2021 as well. So again, some of the other service impacts. Again, Ellen's done a couple of presentations on the route modifications, and then also what she's doing as far as looking at just the overall operational improvements within the department. The largest decrease here is again to unfunded positions. So just again, reviewing the existing positions that are vacant, that are not filled, that are not planned to be filled. I'm sorry, that's, I was reading streets of maintenance. Theirs is the overtime and their debt service payment. There's a slight reduction in those two areas. So Ellen's done a really good job so far of trying to control the overtime, one by again, going back and looking at the existing routes and making sure that we are, one, providing service, but then to also being aware of our, our budget constraints. So Sun Metro is a non-general fund department, so it's fully funded by the fares and fees that they collect. It's also funded through grants they receive, and it's also funded through the dedicated sales tax they receive, the half cent. So there is no general fund portion of the Sun Metro Department. The non-general fund, this is a comparison here on this slide, goal 7, if you look in the middle of the screen. Sun Metro.
Robert, other than capital improvements on the operating side, there have been capital improvements that have been approved in the past that have come out of the, that side of the House, not from the enterprise fund itself.
Right, yes. And so that would be reflected in the debt service, but it not, yes, you're correct, sir. So the overall reduction to the Sun Metro Department, about 1.2 million. And again, that's a result of the, the overtime reduction and the decrease in their debt service payment, so a decrease of 1.6%. This is the breakdown by category, which includes all of those departments. So this slide here is going to give you the breakdown of the budget comparisons. Is there something else you would like to see in particular, Representative Anello?
No, I, so I just, I want to be clear. Thank you for presenting this again. So just being very clear to the public, the 1.6% reduction is not a decrease in service. There's a consolidation, and it is not a decrease in staff. It is just decrease in overtime.
Correct. The overtime in their debt service payment.
Okay, so you're saying it again. The decrease is not a decrease in service.
That's correct. And all of these slides, and so we've put, there is a lot of information that we not only provide on an annual basis on our website, but there's a lot more additional information that Senate Board Two has required us to post. So any presentations that we do, they're always posted on the website. When we do the community meetings, we have yours coming up. We always let the public know that all of this information, we get it in the links, it can all be found on the city's website, so they have access to it. We know it's a lot of information, a lot of slides, and the only presentation alone was, I think, every single slide, but all of the different visual block presentations are on there as well, so.
And Ms. Anello, you talked about no service reductions. If you're saying that the service routes, when those get changed, if that's considered a service reduction, then that is happening.
No, that's, to me, that's considered a consolidation. That's why I said it. I mean, or not.
Yes, ma'am.
Unless you disagree with that.
Right.
No, ma'am.
This is Ellen Smythe. I just wanted to remind the city council that our new service routes went into effect on August 2nd, so we're in day 10, and we've had very few complaints. You know, we have had one or two, but overall, the consolidation has worked really well.
Great, thank you, Ellen. Thank you for all your work on this. Those are all my questions for right now.
Let me see, who else? Representative Hernandez, I think you had a question, did you not? Yes. Representative Hernandez?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Cortinas, Mrs. Smythe, for the clarifying responses. Just a couple of questions. Yesterday, or the other day, I had a community meeting, and one question that was posed to me is, are retired city employees, are they eligible to receive to reduce fare? And thank you to Laura Cruz, who was able to answer some of those questions. However, I see here in the fee schedule that there is a city employee, which is free for city employees. Could that be expanded? And is it legal to expand that to city employees and retired city employees?
Currently, the policy is that if you're a retired Sun Metro employee, you do get to ride for free. We have not looked at expanding it to all retired city employees, but I guess we could look at that.
Okay. And, and I think that, I, I think that that could help, you know, utilizing public transit more, and, and, you know, I just wanted to make a commitment to, to answer that question. But I, I think there might be some FTA rules that require, like, that may, maybe it's not possible, but if we can, if you can get back to me, Ellen, if that's, if that could be modified.
Okay. Yeah, we'll look at the financial impact and then.
Right.
Right, okay.
We'll do. And then, and like the other thing is like, there might be, I need a survey, it needs to be conducted to determine, and you might not be able to get that information from me, and I understand that. I just, I'm curious if there's already been a study to determine what financial impact there would be. So, so my next.
We like Ellen's responses, that she just doesn't immediately say yes. She wants to look at the financial impact. That's smart.
Yeah, yeah. Right. No, I totally get that, and it does not show that on the fee schedule. Maybe I missed it. Oh, yeah, you're right, you're right. Mass transit retirees and spouses free. So, and then mass transit active employees' spouses are free, and then city employees are free. So, but, you know, it would be great if we can have another category for our retired city employees who's given a lot of time to public service. So my next question is, I'm looking at the, the budget narrative here, the budget resolution, and under item, where it says city-sponsored events, and I'm sorry, I lost my place, but there's an item regarding city-sponsored events. One thing that I want to bring to your attention, Ellen, because I know that you're, you're newish to the role, and congratulations on, on this role, is that council approved a resolution that every general election, there, it would be free.
Yes.
Ridership? And I don't see that here. Maybe it's there, and I just not seeing it. But can, can you look at that and make sure that we modify the resolution to include that, so that on November 3rd, 2020, ridership would be free?
Okay, I'll check and see how we go about codifying that, since it's just a one-year event. And we do have other days that are free that could be voted on by council as well. So I'll just look and see historically how we communicate that.
Okay, so it's item 29 on the budget resolution, and the three days that are included for fiscal year 2021 is for city-sponsored events, is the National Dump the Pump Day, Dia de los Niños, Thanksgiving Day, and it, and also if we can include the November 3 election. And I, I know there's others that we consider, and I just, I can't, nothing's coming to mind right now. But just.
Excuse me. Hernandez, I'm sorry to interrupt you. What was the first one? What, National what day?
Dump the pump.
Dump the pump day, yes.
That's the first to leave your cars home and ride the bus. So we make it free on that day.
Right, right.
Thank you, sorry to interrupt.
That's okay. I probably said that too fast. I talk too fast, I need to slow down. So one concern that I wanted to bring to your attention, and I'm curious, on the fee schedule, it doesn't show me the number, but it's the last two items that show red lines. Our face masks for riders, we want to charge 25 cents as a new fee, excuse me, 50 cents. And I know we got a grant from the FTA, and we have other federal grants. Is there no way that we can just provide face masks for free, you know, matter of public health?
It's all about the money, you know. We, we do have them available for free now, but we, we expect that this situation with face masks could may go on two or three years, or four, if four, I mean, for all we know, we may be wearing face masks the rest of our lives. You know, we're, this year with the CARES grant, and next year, maybe yes, but we were just getting ready for the possibility. You know, like Mr. Cortinas mentioned, we don't get any general fund money. So all we have to depend on is our, our own revenue, and it only goes so far. And at some point, you know, if you want more routes, or more buses, or more hours, and then you want everything to be free, it is that the equation doesn't work. So trying really hard to balance all of the requests that come in. And, and this one, I don't think that the riders would really have a problem with, because most of them already have them. So this would just be in the, the dire situation that somebody doesn't have it.
So let me ask you this. It could we, could we have something that says face mask for riders is 50 cents, but while we're in a, while emergency directives are in effect, like local directives are in effect, that those fees are waived?
I.
I just think it sends a wrong message to, like, to send to, to our riders that, hey, there's an emergency directive, there's a pandemic in effect, but we're going to charge you to wear face masks.
Or conversely, because there's an order in effect, why aren't you wearing your mask, your mask?
Right, but we also know that there, there's, there's a direct correlation with users of Sun Metro and not having the, the resources in order to have your own, like, own vehicle. You have a, you have, don't have the resources to buy your own face mask. And so those are just some things that I'm trying to see if there's somewhere where we can compromise on that. Because the other thing I have concern about is the bus schedule, the newspaper format. Like, you know, like, people pick that up and they use that religiously. I just, you know, I have some heartache that we're going to be charging for that, for the newspaper bus schedule, because they've always received it for free, I understand, or may, correct me if I'm wrong. And, you know, it just, it's, it's part of the service that we're providing to the public.
So what we found is that a lot of people pick it up, only look at it one time, and they throw it in the, the nearest dumpster. And so because they're so readily available, there is no respect for it. And we just felt like for a really nominal charge, 25 cents, that they would take better care of it. And we also have all the same information online, and we're trying to modify the apps so that they're easier to use, and, and a lot of people should be pushing over to using the electronic online information. So we're just trying to, you know, move the, the Sun Metro services into the 21st century and, and get with, you know, most people don't take a newspaper at all. And so we talked about not publishing at all, but we didn't think we were ready for that step yet.
Right, and I know, I know some riders, and I have a lot of constituents, they carry, they carry their, their newspaper around because they, they don't have smartphones, they're not really savvy with the internet. So I'm curious, are you going to be, like, purchasing newspaper boxes, where you put a quarter in, and then it, how, how are you going to charge for that?
On the, on the bus.
On the bus?
And, and at the terminals, we have cashiers already. So the cashiers are located at every terminal, where you can buy your day passes, week passes. You can get your identification cards if you're a senior discount. So this should just be one more item that cashiers would work with.
Okay. All right, those are my questions. I, I don't know that I'll support some of these fees, but if there's a way to get creative with that during a pandemic, we're not voting on this today, right? We'll be voting on it on the 18th.
No, and you know, the fees are, like I said, 25 cents and 50 cents. If you want me to, you know, postpone them till next year, when we, when we don't have the CARES grant, we could do that. I mean.
Right, and.
That's not, that's not going to make or break my budget, the 50 cents.
For the, for the face masks. Okay, I think it's, maybe it's something that when we, before we vote, if we can look at that, what, what that fee would look like without it, and what the cost would be, just to kind of get a quick update to see if we want to include that fee or not. But anyway, thank you for answering my questions. That, that was it.
Mayor and council, I do want to say, every year I've said this since, since I started working here, in 2014, there was a deficit at the Sun Metro Department, and there continues to be a deficit, and that's because the system was built out too quickly, and, and the revenues were not able to keep up with the expansion that was approved by policy. And so I'm just making council aware, as I do every single year, when we talk about that we're not made out of money, and we need to start being more physically prudent with this, Ellen's doing a very good job of, of looking at the numbers, and making them over there. We're not happy with First Transit and their operations, and quite frankly, the deficit is, at, at, at a level that's unacceptable, and it happened in 2014, and it just continues to grow because of what she's talking about, that there's no, no limits, there's no parameters. And so we're having those in place so that we can close down that deficit.
Representative Rivera?
Thank you, man. I just have one question for Mrs. Smythe, and, with these new routes that you, you've
With these new routes that you've created, are we taking the ones, are we taking that bus hub, the one that shields the rider from the sun, the heat? Are we moving them over to the new routes right away?
Are you talking about some of the stops that we're not using anymore?
Right.
Right, so if our new service that started last weekend no longer goes down that particular street, say it's on the parallel street, we're removing all of those bus stops and relocating them. You know, we have almost 3,000 bus stops, which I did not know that. And we have about 10 different standards of what the bus stop looks like. Some of it's just a pole with a sign, that's the whole stop. Some of them have the old-fashioned wooden benches, some have the aluminum benches, some are the full-blown Brio stops, and then of course, the transit terminals. So I'm trying really hard to get a handle on the various types of bus stops that we provide for our riders, because we're not very consistent. I mean, we're not consistent at all. And minimally shade would be really good in El Paso, but we're not reaching that target at all right now.
Yeah, that's my concern that I'm receiving at our office, is, you know, they're not shielded by the heat, and you know how the temperature's been kind of brutal lately.
All true.
What's your rating in doing that? A day, two, weekly?
It's going to take a while. Right now, what I've done is I've created a GIS mappings with dots all over the map, just to show where the 3,000 stops are. So that, and then what I've asked my staff to do is to attach a photo on the layer now. You have the technology, you can actually attach a photo of what the stop looks like. So we can, from the office, pull up any stop at any time and say, oh yes, this is an old bench, or what have you. And then based on our budget requirements, depending on how much funding I can put towards bus bench improvements, we'll use that and tackle it maybe over a three or four-year period. Because we can't afford to fix them all in one year. There's too many. But I'll put together a plan. I'll get it done.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor Protem.
Thanks. So just for clarification, the San Metro funding does not come from the general fund?
No, sir.
Okay.
I'm happy to accept some, if you have any.
Has there, I mean, has there ever been a moment where, I mean, from what I understand, most mass transit never makes a profit?
No, I'm not trying to make a profit, I'm just trying to stay within my means and not go into deficit.
All right, so I think it's important to understand that it's not about service to actually make a profit, but just to cover costs, and that mass transit, historically, not just in this city, but historically, whether it's the subway, or streetcars, or buses, it's there as a public good.
But it has its costs, that was a problem.
No, I get that, but it also doesn't affect the general fund.
And also, some cities have.
Yes, it does.
I mentioned the half-cent sales tax for San Metro that they utilize. Some cities have that full penny that go to their mass transit.
Yeah.
So when the city manager always talks about how the county has half the penny, I mean, that's over $45 million a year that could be going into, whether it's mass transit, whether it's crime control district, that could go into one of the other allowable areas for that sales tax money. So again, half.
I'm sure, yeah, but you'd agree that that mass transit is a public good?
Yes. But I think, to answer your question, the general fund did, the city of El Paso, not San Metro, did pay for the entire Mesa Brio. So that did not come from San Metro, it did not come from grant money. The city of El Paso, back in 2012 or 2010.
Yeah.
And they're paying the debt.
Okay, I just wanted to just.
Clarification, it was the Alameda that the city paid for 100%. The Mesa did have federal dollars.
Alameda, right.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to state too, that I think that in terms of, well, in terms of paying for the newspaper routes as well as the masks, I think that both of those are something that, I don't know why we'd be charging for them, and especially the concern with the masks. At least for the next year, we know that this pandemic at least is something from 12 to 18 months. We should be doing everything to encourage people using masks on there. And even if it's a few people that are using, that are using the masks, I don't see, I don't think it sends the right message to do that, especially when there's probably funding opportunities for masks, and we're already using CARES funding to buy masks and PBE for city purposes. So I just wanted to be on the record for that. In terms of paying for a quarter or 50 cents, is that something that, I mean, we're, are we using credit cards for the buses at this point? Or is it still just cash?
No, we have credit cards as well. What we really want to do is get away from cash completely, and have like a, like they have a Walmart gift card or shopping card that is reloadable for people who don't have a card, so we're working on that as well.
Yeah, and so that's my concern, is that by having the fee for a quarter or 50 cents, it would still also be encouraging cash exchanges as well. And so I just.
Yeah, we still take cash. We, you know, the coin shortage, the only reason we still get as many coins as we get is because we've historically been the number one customer at the bank. So they kind of already set aside the coinage that we need. But it's an amazing amount of coins that we take in. It's mind-boggling. I mean, like, full-time cashier is mind-boggling.
Yeah, and I think too, that, you know, having it priced out at 50 cents in a quarter is going to encourage more cash, not less. You know, if you can look, I mean, I just, a question about funding that for this year, about having those costs there.
Okay, we're ready to do a vote on the motion as read by Mayor Protem. Let's vote.
Correct, Laura?
We got a motion and a second, correct, Laura?
That's correct, sir. There was a motion to close a public hearing and postpone the final vote until, on the budget until August 18, 2020. On that motion, Board Member Schwartzman.
Aye.
Anello.
Aye.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Salcido.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Rivera.
Aye.
Lizarra.
Aye.
Board Chair Margul.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. The public hearing is closed at 10:32 a.m. May we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn the Mass Transit Department Board Meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? And the Mass Transit Department Board Meeting for Tuesday, August 11, 2020, is adjourned at 10:32 a.m. May we have a motion to reconvene the regular city council meeting?
Motion to reconvene.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to reconvene the regular city council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Yes.
The regular city council meeting is back in session at 10:32 a.m. We're on page three, item 5.1. This is pursuant to section 370.002 of the Texas Local Government Code. City Council will conduct public hearings every three years to review and take action on the Juvenile Curfew Ordinance, El Paso City Code Title 10, Chapter 20, to determine whether the juvenile curfew ordinance shall be continued, modified, or abolished. The public hearing is open at 10:33 a.m. We did not have anyone sign up to speak on this item.
Ms. Prime, which one is that one?
This is item 5.1.
5.1.
Oh, okay, thank you, thank you.
If there's no one signed up, no one there will close the hearing.
May we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing.
Let's vote.
On that motion.
Just a quick question, are we going to be voting on this item again?
Yes, on the 18th.
On the 18th? Hi, Chief Silva. And that information on the 18th will be provided, that was requested from Representative Lizarra.
I'll have most of the information you asked from 1991 to present. And we have two databases that we had to go through because it's very old data, but I will have most of it available for you.
Okay, all right, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, let's vote.
And just a reminder, that our previous action allowed us to come back, so if you want data beyond that, we still can come back in September. Because we talked about an additional 30 days, but the team have been able to gather the majority of in a shorter period of time than we expected. This is Deion.
Okay, let's vote.
Okay, there is a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Mayor Protem Schwartzman.
Yes.
Representative Anello.
Aye.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Salcido.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Rivera.
Aye.
Lizarra.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. The public hearing is closed at 10:35 a.m. The next item is 6.1. This is a public hearing on the proposed budget as amended, which begins on September 1, 2020, and ends August 31, 2021. The public hearing is open at 10:35 a.m. We did not have any members of the public sign up to speak on this item.
All right, then let's vote to close.
Mayor Protem, do you have the motion?
I do, I just have some questions from staff relating to the budget as well.
Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
So, one of the things that was mentioned previously is that, is that the Phase 2 and Phase 3 of the Quality Life Portfolio, specifically libraries and museums, is funded in the eventuality, or in the case that that the city and the Public Health Director feel it's safe to open up those facilities. They are listed at to low to moderate risk, low to moderate risk on the Texas Medical Society map at the same level as playing on the park for, playing on the playground for an hour, has the same risk as, has the same risk as eating in a restaurant outside, or walking into busy downtown. But my point being is that I'm wondering if there's some specifics about what Phase 2 and Phase 3 of the Quality Life openings looks like, and the funding that's dedicated towards them. Because it has been mentioned that there is funding set aside for those in our upcoming budget.
Are you asking, I guess, the first question, Representative Schwartzman, consistent with our openings in bringing staff back from telecommuting? Are you asking what those phases look like? Because nothing's changed in terms of the phased conditions to return employees from telecommuting back to, back to.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not asking about the requirements to open up. I'm asking about how much funding is set aside for reopening for Phase 2 and Phase 3, which has been mentioned, said, don't worry, we have funding set aside if we're able to open up libraries, if we're able to open up these quality life amenities, museums in a safe way. So that has been mentioned, so I want to know how much funding is there specifically for the reopening in Phase 2 and Phase 3? And also more detail about, we know what Phase 1 looks like, because we've, you know, we were planning on it up until the numbers got worse. So I'm trying to understand what Phase 2 and Phase 3 look like as well, for the benefit of the public.
Robert, do you want to talk about the financials first, and then I can go through what we're looking at for 1 and 2, actually, since we're not even, we haven't been able to proceed with that yet? Thanks.
Yeah, so this is a slide we've shown several times, going back to July 6, and we've shown it a couple of times since then. Again, this is a breakdown of the Quality Life Departments from Gulf 4, showing the impact to the library, museum cultural affairs, parks and recreation, and the zoo. Overall reduction from the FY '20 budget to the FY '21 of just over 9 million, of 17.5%, primarily being impacted in the Parks and Recreation Department. And this is primarily due to the unfunding of vacant positions, in particular on this, in this portfolio. It's also some additional deferrals in the layoffs that took place earlier this year. And so as mentioned, Tracy Jerome has done a couple of presentations related to the Quality Life and what that Phase 1 and Phase 2 approach is going to look like. And so with that, I'll kick it over to her, and let her talk a little bit more about the detail on what that is going to look like.
Thanks, Robert. IT, if you can pull up the presentation, please. Council, I put together a presentation just to give you a review of where we are and what our next steps are going to be looking like from a service provision standpoint. I think it's the next one down, IT, 8.1? No, I'm sorry, it's the one that was sent to you, Laura Cruz Acosta sent it to you? So while we're waiting for IT to pull up that presentation, as you're all aware, we had, I come to council in June to discuss with you what our Phase 1 reopening was going to look like, starting in early July, across all portions and sections of the portfolio. Unfortunately, however, with the spikes in infection rates, it was determined, working together closely with health authority, that we would postpone all of those reopenings to the public.
Hey, Tracy, I have the presentation. IT, if you'll take that down, I'll share my screen.
Thanks, Robert. So if we can go, next slide, please. Sorry, Robert. So I just want to do a little bit of a recap of kind of where we were, immediate impacts, what we're doing right now from a service delivery standpoint, and then how we plan to move forward. Again, dependent, very dependent on the health and the health and safety situation in the community. Next slide, please. So again, just to remind you all, the portfolio includes our libraries, our museums and cultural affairs, our Parks and Recreation Department, and our zoo and botanical gardens. Next slide, please. Just a quick recap, next slide. Just so that everyone is fully aware, the entire portfolio has remained engaged since the shutdown occurred, nothing has stopped. We have continued across the portfolio to work very hard to continue to engage the public and to provide programming in a safe and effective way to make sure that we stay, again, very engaged with the community. So libraries has continued through with their summer reading program. Next slide, next slide. And this is continuing on through the end of the summer. There's been lots of other activities happening as well. I just wanted to include things that are still ongoing. Next slide, please. Continuing on, this is all through the reading program. Next slide, please, for museums and cultural affairs. We've continued programming throughout and across all of the sites in a virtual way so that we can make sure that everyone is engaged, regardless of whether or not our doors are actually open to the public. Next slide, please. Moving through again, our August programming. Next slide, please. Next slide. And again, virtual programming has continued and has been highly attended across all of the platforms and across all of the different departments within the portfolio. Next slide, please. We can continue on. Parks, again, has remained engaged. As you're aware, they've continued through. July was Parks and Recreation Month. There were a lot of collaborative programming that they did, you know, with the libraries and with museums and cultural affairs. Next slide, please. And that virtual programming continues. Next slide. Same with the zoos. Again, the sofa safaris are being produced on a regular basis, and they continue to be pushed out. Next slide. Lots of other virtual educational opportunities, especially with so much virtual learning happening across all of our school districts, with our independent schools and with our homeschoolers. Next slide. And then other ways in which the zoo is interfacing with the business community and with the community as well, in addition to some of the educational programming. This is some of the more fun programming that's available. Next slide, please. And next slide. So the considerations, again, as we've discussed, health and safety has got to be first and foremost. And we're talking about the health and safety of all members of our community, which includes our workforce. So when we're talking about reopening sites, nothing happens without our people being there. And again, we need to make sure that we are aligning with best protocols and best safety standards for everyone in the community, including our workforce. We are working within the budgetary constraints that we face, not only for the rest of this fiscal year, but for fiscal year '21. And again, our approach has always been a focus on quality, on regional service provision, and being phased so that we can be successful in how we move forward. Next slide, please. So with our libraries, our libraries actually are proceeding now with Phase 1, which this is actually a more expanded Phase 1 approach than what we thought we were going to be able to do with you initially when I came to you in June. So beginning this Friday, the 14th of August, our regional book drops will be reopened. Those are located across the city. They're open on one day a week, they're open on Fridays. We have approximately 60,000 items that are currently on loan, so what we want to do is bring those items back. They will need to be quarantined for an extended period of time, however, before staff may be able to interact with those materials. before staff may be able to interact with those materials. And so that's why we only have one day a week so that we can, again, ensure the health and safety not only of the community, but of our members of our staff, who will then be bringing those materials back in, wearing, of course, proper PPE and following all best practices for handling these materials, cleaning these materials, and then placing the materials back into circulation. Next slide, please. Beginning next week on Monday, the 17th of August, we will also begin our curbside checkout service. We will be doing this across the city. So not only will we be offering curbside checkout at our regional libraries, which are Richard Burgess, Esperanza, Costa Moreno, and Doris Van Dorn. Next slide. But we're actually also going to be mobilizing our mobile services so that we'll be doing curbside in other districts as well. So we'll be at the Amijo Library, the Cloudy Fox, the Sergio Choncoso, and our Judge Marcus Library as well. So we'll be extending curbside service across the entire community. Again, and that begins on next Monday. And we encourage you to to visit the library website to start reserving your materials and getting ready to be able to start returning as well as taking out new materials from the libraries. Next slide, please. Again, all this will be handled, the checkout system will be handled online. And then there'll be a curbside appointment system that's set up. And again, when you go to the website, you'll get all the information that you need. And what we're doing is we're trying to do everything we can to make sure that we remain as touchless and as properly social distanced as possible. Staff will be preparing, bagging, and staging materials for collection. They will be in proper PPE. And visitors will be required to be wearing their face mask as they pull in with their cars as well. There'll be a handoff of materials. And then people can proceed with enjoying their library checkout items. Next slide, please. For reopening for our Phase Two, again, what we're imagining is continuing all of our Phase One services. We will look at what the demand is for curbside services and to see how we may be able to expand those services. And then what we're, our goal is, again, making sure that we're within health and safety, the parameters that we need to be functioning in, begin a computer library service access by appointment at our regional library sites. Because we know that this is a need in the community, and this is a need that we are, we have been meeting, that's been very important from the libraries. And so we look forward to being able to move forward with that after the completion, successful completion of Phase One, being able to, again, evolve into that. Next slide, please. For museums and cultural affairs, or for museums, cultural affairs is separate because that's our larger events. But for the museums, we're going to begin, again, with a regional approach, opening Museum of Art and the Museum of History downtown. And we will begin with a Thursday, Friday, and Saturday opportunity for visitors on Phase One. Next slide, please. Again, we will be monitoring to make sure that we're complying with current, whatever the current guidelines are at the time of opening, ensure social distancing, PPE being worn, face masks will be will be required, and enhanced janitorial services will be will be utilized to make sure that we're providing a safe and clean environment for our guests. Next slide, please. Again, we will remain on a virtual platform for now for demonstrations, lectures, camps. And we will look at how that can be expanded, depending, again, on on guidance as that comes down from the state and from our local health authority. Next slide. So for Phase Two, what we envision doing is being able to add and expand, going back to a more normal weekly schedule. So we would be, we'll be adding more days, more openings and access to the museum once we're able to navigate and work through successfully Phase One. Next slide, please. So Parks and Recreation, Parks, along with the libraries right now, has been able to start their Phase One reopening. So of course, all of our city parks are currently open, our skate parks are open, courts are open. And just recently, we've been able to actually expand to the playgrounds and fitness equipment opening and and reoffering those those options to our community. Again, we are, we are still requesting that all visitors follow all safety guidelines, health and safety guidelines. Our Phase One will continue when we're when we're able to with the opening of our regional recreation centers. And this is a list of those that will be open. Next slide, please. They'll be open Mondays through Thursdays with a cleaning period in between opening times. And then Fridays and Fridays and Saturdays in the mornings only. Again, this will, this type of scheduling will allow us to make sure that we're maintaining from a janitorial and from a from a cleaning perspective, a safe and healthy environment for the community and for our staff. Next slide, please. Moving into Phase Two, Phase Two will include the expansion of additional openings of facilities for the community. Next slide, please. For the zoo and botanical gardens, again, Phase One is a is a limited opening to the public, so Wednesdays through Fridays, and then Saturdays and Sundays for those facilities. Next slide. Next slide, please. I've shared all this information with you previously on Phase One. Next slide. So for Phase Two, again, this would be an expansion to a seven-day-a-week schedule. So going from after the successful completion of Phase One, where we will have a limited schedule, we envision being able to go back to a seven-day-a-week schedule, being open to the public. Next slide, please. And again, moving forward, you know, health and safety is everything. Making sure that we're working within our financial means to continue to provide quality quality of experience to all of our, to the public, again, with a regional approach and and making sure that whatever we are doing for the community, that we are committed to making sure that it's that those services are provided at an exceptional level. And with that, I'm open to any comments or questions.
I really appreciate it. If there is a way to be able to get this presentation, I'd like to share it with my with my constituents. It was very thorough. I appreciate it.
Sure, no problem.
Just, I don't know if this is
Mayor Protem.
Question again, but both of those phases, Phase One and Phase Two, they're fully budgeted for for the upcoming fiscal year, starting September 1st. If, again, understanding that, you know, if if it's if it's decided it's healthy enough to open them, they're funded to to have those phased reopenings.
Yes.
Their budget. Okay. All right, Representative Anello. Thank you.
Sorry, my dog is barking. I apologize. Tracy, thank you for that presentation. And I apologize if I'm about to ask anything that was already in there. But how many phases do we expect till we are 100% open? Like, are you guys looking at a five-phase, three-phase?
Representative, we're trying to be at this point as flexible as possible because the situation is something that is difficult for us to to really understand. There's no endpoint in sight. So normally, if you had a start and an ending point, you'd be able to say, okay, we're going to phase this out over this many phases. What we're trying to do is, again, we're trying to work within the confines of, again, the health and safety for the community, for our workforce, and making sure that we're working within the budget. So, you know, no one, no one wants to go forward more than quality of life, obviously, because we are so used to having that high, high touch, that high, you know, interaction with the community. That's what we all do. But again, we're trying to be as, you know, as as judicious as possible in the decisions that we're making. So what I what I wanted to show you today is where we want to go next and then where we want to go after that. You know, if if something miraculous happens and we're able to, you know, return, quote unquote, to whatever that normal, you know, it's never going to be what it was before. But, you know, no one's trying to hold us back in so much as other than the the virus, you know? And staff will work within the confines of what we have from a budgetary standpoint for fiscal fiscal year 21. We will do everything we can, being responsible from a financial perspective, to also meet the needs of the community. And we're trying to be as creative as we can be in that regard.
No, and I understand. I'll hold it really quick, Carrie. The reason I ask is because I get that question a lot. So I just am trying to, like, be able to relay the information to constituents. Like, I absolutely understand what you just said and totally agree with it. I mean, it's just a question that we're getting a lot. People really just want to know, like, how have we strategically laid this out so they can understand better?
So from a strategic standpoint, we have a lot of different ways that we've looked at how we can move forward. And we've looked, you know, and but there are different ways of slicing this. So our Phase One, actually, we've been able to, for certain departments, i.e. for the libraries, we've listened to, we've listened to you as a body, and we've listened to what you're hearing from your community. And so we tried to push that even and expand that even more. So, you know, yes, we have a plan in place. But I think, you know, I think Carrie has talked about what the planning, sort of after first contact, things always change, right? So we have everything laid out and planned in the way that we want to go. But we're also trying to be sensitive to the the fluidity of the situation that we're that we're working through. So what I would say to you is, you know, when you're talking to constituents, what we want people to hear is, we are listening and we are trying to be as responsive as possible within the confines of the situation that we're working.
Okay. And then, I'm sorry, we're, did you mention pools? More focusing on indoor pools? You know, we have the one at Memorial, the one at By Count. I'm not familiar with other pools. I apologize to the other districts that I did not mention. But were those just in your presentation?
No, I didn't touch on aquatics. First of all, spray parks were originally included in our phased, in our Phase One. But we're at the end of the season at this point. And given the fact that we're not even able to proceed on any of the other aspects of what's happening with the parks other than the public, the outdoor parks being open, we removed spray parks because we're at the end of the season with that. But if you want, if you want to discuss more about aquatics, I think that Mr. Fife, Director for Cultural Affairs and Parks, is on the line.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I would just like to know what our plan moving forward for indoor aquatics is. I know, again, I have an indoor aquatic facility in my district. I've heard a lot about it. I know the rest of the council have heard a lot about it. There's been a lot of data and information that has come out from the CDC about how chlorine impacts COVID, and you are not as high as risk. So a lot of people are kind of wondering why we're not moving forward with these facilities. And so my question just is, you know, whether it's Phase One, Two, or Three, are indoor aquatics funded to be opened if we get to a safe point in the FY21 budget?
So Representative Anello, for the record, Ben Fife, Director of Cultural Affairs and Recreation. At this moment, indoor aquatics is not in Phase One or Two. It's something we would have to explore in a later phase. I do understand that there is a lot of data coming from the CDC and other sources about chlorine and the safety of aquatic activity. However, the other thing we have to consider are the fiscal ramifications, given that our budget actually had the greatest reduction out of all of the quality of life departments. Aquatics are probably the most expensive thing we have to run. In fact, ma'am, the pool in your district averages about 2,500 people a month, and it costs the department about $11.50 per person to operate it each month. Just for your reference, recreation centers, which are what we're looking to open up first, average about $4 per person. And so it really does come down to, you know, the fiscal ramifications and not just the health ramifications there. We are working right now with some of our private swim organizations. Council has approved contracts already that are in place where we're passing on virtually 100% of the costs to the user. And we are looking to do that with several school districts right now as well to make sure that students are able to get in the water and remain competitive, particularly for for competition and scholarships.
Okay, well, I mean, I just, you know, that's a little worrisome, right? And I'm not even going to talk about the pool in my district. I'm going to focus a little bit more on By Count because I know that pool is really set up for the elderly, right? And so we are not opening senior centers. I totally understand why that would be part of the last phase of opening. I'm not going to disagree with that at all. But, right, so now you have seniors who are emotionally isolated and things like, you know, aquatic centers are, you know, really physically important for them. And if we're not looking at how we're going to be reopening that up, you know, I'm really concerned about the mental and physical health of the seniors in this community and what our responsibilities are to them. And so I really, I just, you know, I've seen how we've done with libraries. You know, we're not opening all of them. They're not open at all normal hours. They're not open every day. I would really love to see in this budget, for when it is safe, a phase that we can be opening the aquatic centers, again, partially maybe just Fridays, Saturdays from, you know, a certain amount of hours. I just, again, you know, thinking about seniors who are not having the person-to-person activities at senior centers, and now we're not having the physical activity at, for example, the By Count Aquatic Center. And so for me, that's that's going to be really important.
And and so if I may, Representative, the By Count facility, which is actually in the By Count Multipurpose Center, technically, that building is actually right now serving as a field office for the Health Department and will remain so as long as we are in the current state of emergency. And so at this point, even if we did have the budget, we likely would not be allowing the public to utilize those facilities because it is being used by the Health Department as a field office to be able to allow us to work to contain the pandemic. The other thing that I would mention there for that particular facility is it was slated for renovation. Actually, one of the last community meetings we had before COVID hit was for improvements to that.
Well, that's just one example. I know that the Westside Pool also has a smaller pool with the ADA wheelchair ramp. I just use that as an example. I think that all of the aquatic centers, you could find an importance for some of them. I think elderly physical activity is very important, whatever that looks like. I think we need to move forward with, again, if we're doing it on an abbreviated schedule, fine. But I do think in this budget, we need to see a little bit of effort. I don't want to say effort. That's not a fair word. But but, you know, I would like to see a little bit of movement on it.
Understood.
Representative Anello, I just wanted to answer your question that you asked initially. The guidance that was given to staff on the 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 phasing back. And so the planning guidelines that were given to staff was a 25% return for Phase One, a 50% return for Phase Two. And then when we get to Phase Three, that's that's 100% resuming normal operations.
Okay, thank you for that.
That's one, getting across the city, just so, just so that the whole council, just to remind the whole council.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And again, I was just asking that to be able to communicate effectively with people who are kind of like, well, we've heard about Phase One, what happens after that. So I appreciate the information from you, Carrie, Ben, and Tracy.
Representative Anello, another thing that can maybe help you with that information is the fact that, if you remember, we wanted to increase the rate stabilization fund as much as possible in order, in order to give the council maximum flexibility. So that that's another option for you.
In October, correct?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Good, thank you. I mean, yeah, I'm fine if we're, if we come back with a conversation that, you know, we can look at this in October. I just, I really want it to be a conversation. And I just want to emphasize how important it is to my community, to the senior community, and I just think to the city as a whole. Thank you.
And I just wanted to make a comment before we move on because it's important to keep reminding the community. And, I mean, you all have heard this during all the presentations. But the number one priority for this budget is to make sure that we didn't increase the tax rate. And so as a part of that, I mean, there were a lot of difficult decisions that went into getting that done. And so unfortunately, yes, the quality of life did suffer some of the impacts as far as some of the services. But again, that that priority, again, to not increase the tax rate was really what drove this this budget development. So that's important for the community to to hear. And I mean, I've gotten really good feedback. I've received several calls during the presentations I've done so far, and the community is very appreciative of that. So, I mean, the understanding that we're in a very, very difficult situation and that obviously there's going to be impacts. But again, to not increase the tax rate during this time, I think, is very important for the community, not only for our residents, but businesses as well.
All right, let's vote to close the hearing.
Mayor Protem, do you have the motion? Mayor Protem, I think he stepped away. I don't see him on camera.
I'm here. I was on mute. My apologies.
Thank you.
I'm sharing my screen. I want that motion.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Thanks. Motion to close the public hearing on Agenda 6.1 and to postpone the final vote on the budget to August 18th, 2020.
Second.
All right, let's vote.
There is a motion and a second to approve the action read into the record by Mayor Protem Schwartz-Bine on that motion. Mayor Protem Schwartz-Bine.
Yes.
Representative Anello.
Aye.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Salcido? Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rivera?
Aye.
Liz Araga?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously, and the public hearing is closed at 11:04 a.m. The next item is 7.1. This is discussion and action on a resolution to authorize a city manager to sign a golf course operation and concession agreement for Butterfield Trail Golf Course between City of El Paso and Spirit Golf Management LLC.
Is there a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Another, do we want to do a presentation on this, Sam?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I think this is a great opportunity for I think this is a great opportunity for our community.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, Terry Sharp, Department of Aviation. I'd like to present on Butterfield Trail Golf Club reopening for the citizens of El Paso. This is really a response to the concerns of the community, and also from council, it was very clear when the airport terminated the agreement with Kemper Sports that council was interested in keeping the golf course maintained and having it returned to service as, as soon as possible. So the return of the golf course maintains an important quality of life amenity. It's also a great opportunity for economic development for the airport and the city. The new management and concession agreement is, is profit oriented. The concession agreement puts a risk on the concessionaire. It's a profit potential for both parties. It's a 10-year term with an option to extend another 10 years based on capital investment into the course, and we're looking for tee times as early as this fall. The concession agreement is between Spirit Golf Management LLC, please excuse my typo up there, and Spirit Golf Management owns and operates the Picacho Hills Country Club in Las Cruces. They also operate a concession agreement for the city of Elephant Butte at Sierra del Rio Championship Golf. Going forward, the elements of future success, it's, it's no secret that Butterfield Trail, under the management reimbursement contract that the airport had, the course was losing $1 million a year since its inception. This new model emphasizes profitability. Our concession model projects a profit of $125,000 the first year, that is in line with the minimum annual guarantee in the contract. As I said, the course will be ready for play this fall. One of the best parts that I find in this contract is the commitment by Spirit to expand the banquet and conference facilities. It's no secret that it's a, it's a great place to hold a wedding, and when, when we had to shut down due to COVID, and then the eventual termination of the contract, 14 weddings at the golf course were canceled this summer, and we don't ever want to see that happen again. There's, it's a view like none other in the city, with the mountains and the, and the fairways right out of the clubhouse. We think the expanded conference facilities going from 300 capacity upwards to 600 within the first term will allow for more weddings, birthdays, anniversaries, quinceañeras, change of command events, and the like. So we're looking for that to be a real driver of success for the concessionaire. The rental rate for year one will go from the approval of the contract until the end of 2021. This will be based strictly on the percentage of rental revenues for gross receipts, excuse me, and that's for food and alcohol, beer, wine, green fees, driving range, and for pro-shop sales. And the reason we went off of, off of this for the first year, the restaurant, under current COVID restrictions, is limited to 50%. We wanted to give the concessionaire the best foot forward on the contract. In the event that gross receipts do not match up, then the amount of dollars put into the course over that term will count towards that year one percentage. Years two through the end of year three, we go to the minimum annual guarantee, which is from the July appraisal on the golf course, and the minimum annual guarantee is $125,000, that's fair market value on the golf course. And of course, a percentage rental, if it exceeds the minimum, minimum annual guarantee, then we'll pay, we'll get paid the difference to EPIA. Year four, the minimum annual guarantee will bump up to $191,000, fair market value, and we expect the percentage rental, again, as a course improves, the concessionaire makes more money, the airport makes more money. So that percentage rental is also tied in there. If it exceeds the 191, the airport will get the difference of that as well. And the adjustment after year four, the minimum annual guarantee will be equal to 80% of the immediately preceding lease year's percentage rental, but not less than the minimum annual guarantee set in the fourth lease year. EPIA will have access to portions of the property four times a year. I know Sam has been talking about having a Butterfield Trail Family Day out there to celebrate the heritage of the Butterfield Trail, so we're coming up with some ideas that would draw families and non-golfers out to the golf course for events. And just as the bottom notes here, the only, the only responsibility that EPI is, EPIA is taking on in the course is responsibility for the HVAC system and the structural elements of the clubhouse. So in closing, I think one of the big things that we need to look at is the turnaround of losing $1 million a year to this potential profit-making. We know just by not losing over the term of the contract, we're going to save $20 million. That, that's baked in. And the profit through the concession agreement, we estimate up to $3 million, so a turn of $23 million over the term of the lease. It returns an award-winning golf course for public play. It enhances the development of all EPA, EPIA properties. Certainly, we look for a lot of great things with William Beaumont opening early next year, and how we can capitalize on that population that's in the hospital and enticing them to come over to the course for dining and golf. And it helps become another profit center for the airport. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any of your questions.
Representative Nelson?
Thank you, Terry. So I want to be clear, there is, is, there is no funding for this coming from the general fund, correct?
No, ma'am.
Okay, I just, I just want to make that clear into the juxtaposition to the conversation that we just had, that these two are not correlated. And so with that, I just want to, I want to thank you, and I want to thank the council members for, you know, supporting this district to, you know, kind of gem, and for all your work you did on this very quickly.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Protam?
Yeah, it's really great to see that we were able to save this economic driver in part of the city's quality of life amenities. I just want to, again, thank city management, thank all of city staff, airport staff, everybody who had a hand in the role in figuring out a, a solution for this gem in our community. So thank you very much.
Okay, let's vote.
Mayor, I'd like to just make one point, if I may, my apologies, you're ready to vote, but this is a good example. I know there's been several other occasions when council has had concerns about, I know that there was one issue about like soccer fields, we revamped our plan and came back with, with a better plan, because we listened. I think this is another example of that, this was a concern to you, Mayor, to the council, and I think that the staff is very creative in coming back with solutions. So thank y'all for challenging us and for working with us to make sure that the strategic plan chooses to be executed.
Let's vote.
Okay, there is a motion and a second to approve item 7.1. On that motion, Mayor Protam, Shortline.
Aye.
Representative Anello.
Aye.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Salcido?
Aye.
Rodriguez? Rivera?
Aye.
Liz Araga?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Representative Rodriguez not present for the vote. The next item is 8.1. This is discussion in action on a 2012 Quality of Life Update Presentation and Resolution authorizing the city manager to delay projects that are part of the amended 2012 Quality of Life Bond proposed three-year rollout plan, which will increase operational costs until such time the city determines that operational funds are available, and approves the allocation of additional funds of investment interest earnings of quality of life funds to the identified Proposition 1 and 2 projects in Exhibit A of this resolution to meet funding gaps.
Motion?
Second.
Okay, let's have the discussion.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, Sam Rodriguez, City Engineer. I'm going to share my presentation with you. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you the update today on Quality of Life program. This is part of our strategic plan, what goal, goal for, as well as having recreational culture and educational opportunities for our community. What I'm going to cover today is an overview of the Prop 1 and Prop 2 projects, give you some detail on modular play structures, as well as the shade canopies in our parks, outdoor sports fields, paved trails and trailheads. Also talk about the schedule and the budget impact, and how we intend to roll out the projects moving forward. We also have an update for the zoo and their program as well, it's part of Quality of Life. And then have a discussion about investment interest and our recommendation to allocate these funds into various projects. Just the rollout parameters, and this will be more important as we, as we're getting ready, the, the capital programs, as well as the public safety program. We're looking to, obviously, to reduce costs and lower our budgets as we move forward, looking at available cash flow. This is not so much of an issue with Quality of Life, but it is with the other capital programs, as we're looking to kick those up, back up over the next couple of years. We're obviously trying to measure up against community expectations as to when they're expecting these projects to be rolled out into the field, looking at immediate needs, specifically to, as it relates to code, safety, or facility maintenance, and protecting our assets. And we're also looking to complete the design and move those into construction when the funding does become available. We've been in front of you for Quality of Life programs many, many times. When you look at, just with CID by, by ourselves, we, through the updates that we do, whether it's quarterly, or Quality of Life specific presentations like today, we've been in front of you 17 times over the past 32 months. That's almost every other month that we're in front of you. That's in addition to the operational updates that our various departments do, like parks, water parks, the Mexican-American Cultural Center, zoo, and the balance of them. You've seen this slide before, we're still under this premise, that we're continuing to evaluate our capital programs, really establish the available resources, not just from capital money, but also from the operational costs, as we make recommendations and adjust the deployment of the capital program into our community. To date, we have completed 118 projects in the Quality of Life portfolio. This year, completed 11 of those. And this, these are the balances financially. So you see, look at parks, we have under contract just over $21 million, we still have a balance of $38 million. The Museum of Cultural Affairs, the balance of these dollars are associated with the MAC and the Children's Museum, they're under design right now. The zoo has a component of that as well, and you'll see the detail later in this presentation. And then the libraries, we're wrapping up the design and the remodels of those, so we can get those into construction as well. This is a map of our city, showing the impact that this program has had throughout, basically touching every corner of our community and improving our quality of life. Within Prop 1, just an overview, we have 25 projects that are currently in design that will continue into construction. These are projects that are associated with existing facilities, or projects that are needed to address code, to maintain our facilities, or to maintain them, in order to address safety issues. We do have 21 of these that are in design, they're mainly trails that, once we complete the design and the entitlement process, meaning agreement and for right of way, will be put on the shelf until a future year. We do have two projects that are out to bid right now. It's the NIP program, as well as an enhancement to existing facility over at the zoo. And we have 36 projects that are in construction that, that we're going to carry through, includes the recreation community centers, as well as the water parks in our community. We have 13 projects that have already been completed under design and have been deferred, and we are evaluating several of those to get those into construction as well. And these will be existing facilities, such as the Veterans Recreation Center. Under Prop 2, we have seven projects that are in design that will continue into construction. They're mainly libraries and the Children's Museum, because of the contractual obligations that we do have with the external party. And then we're also proceeding with design in the Mexican-American Cultural Center that will be deferred once we complete the design. Memorial Park Library Expansion is under construction, and we will, will be done here relatively soon. The Children's Museum is still anticipated to be completed in 2022. They're proceeding with the design and are scheduled to, to break ground later this year. And the Mexican-American Cultural Center, which has wrapped up a round of public meetings, and we will be bringing a detailed update to council on the design and the program side of this project over the next couple of months. The MPC is still on hold until further notice, and you know, we're, we emphasize that we're not spending any dollars on these, on this project until we are cleared by the court system. With the ongoing projects, these were buckets of money that were scheduled for things like play structures, NIP programs, the update is as follows. The modular play structures and shade canopies, those have been programmed. You look at two, the Eastside Regional Park Phase 2, Joy Barasa has a playground facility. Those projects have been deferred because of the operational costs that are associated with those projects. However, we are looking to see how we can get the playgrounds installed, given that we do have grant, grant dollars from the state, and we want to make sure that we get those spent within the allotted time associated with the grant. So some photos of the completed playground in our community. The canopy program is well in its way, we have five of those that are scheduled to be completed this summer, and then we have the balance of the canopies that will be installed through next year. And this, again, some photos of, of the existing shade structures. The NIP program, we're well under the, on the deployment of Round 4, with 19 projects. We do anticipate Round 5, it's, which will include $4 million for our community, to be open for applications next calendar year. The sports field lighting, most of them are complete, the balance, where we have money is under construction as we speak. We do have three projects that are going to wait till the end to identify additional dollars to get those completed. Again, some photos of the completed flat field projects, the lighting portion of it.
Counsel, we're one away from losing a quorum. We're missing Rep. Shortline, Morgan, Anello, Rodriguez.
The paved trails and trailheads, again, the paved trails, we are proceeding with the design of these projects, as well as the agreements. These quarters are, are, some belong to other entities, such as the, the Water Irrigation District, El Paso Electric, are, are entities that we're working in agreements with, to be able to construct these facilities on their land. Again, once we complete the design, we will be deferring these per the schedule that you'll see here in a minute. This is a trail map that we have throughout our community, so you can see what's been planned, what's existing, and what we're working towards as we continue with this program. You heard a very detailed update on the Mountains River Trail over the last couple of months, so we're continuing again with the design of this project, and we're in coordination with the, with the community as well. The trailheads, we completed several of those, and we're completing the design on, and then the additional ones, so that we can deploy those. These are existing facilities, such as the Francis Kingston Park, that will be continuing into construction as well. And again, just a map showing you of what's been completed, what we're working on, and then what's going to be under development in the future. And then photos of the amenities and the existing facilities. The trails and the trailheads are getting a lot of use, obviously, right now, really successful program from that aspect of it. The schedule, over the next several slides, you'll see how the balance of these projects, they're listed in alphabetical order, so you can see what the balance of these dollars are, and how they're projecting to spend them, so that we can complete the program throughout. Right now, we're projecting that this program will complete out through fiscal year 2024, where you see some of the major projects, such as the Penguin exhibit at the zoo, Joy Barasa, and as well as the, the Lower Beaumont Flatfield area. And then, again, just further in breaking down the list of projects that we're working on, and how they'll be completed by fiscal year. So this year, through the end of this year, we're, we're projecting 12 projects to be complete. 21 will have 46 projects completed. In 22, there'll be 18 projects. In 23, there'll be 14 projects, again, mainly a lot of trails in some of the zoo program that are scheduled towards the end, as well as in fiscal year 24, where we're looking at the major projects, such as Joy Barasa. projects such as Joey Barasa and the Lower Beaumont Recreation Facility and the MAC. I'm gonna, give me one second, Mayor. I'm gonna re-share my screen so that you can hear the sound on this. Projects are looking really, really great, which is did a field visit here the last couple of weeks and they're really wrapping up the internal of the community centers over at Valle Bajo and Chami Sal are pretty much complete. They're really wrapping up, punching us at this point. The Loma Land is, is, is going a little longer just because of the earthwork that was associated with the, with the site. It was previously a park. And so we had to do a lot of over excavation to get that project started. But they're really looking fantastic. They're going to be great assets to the community. And you saw the water parks as well. We've been working very closely with the contractors to, to work with them on, on timing of, of the projects as well. They've, they've had impacts related to labor associated with COVID issues. And so they, they're, they're working as, as best as they can to try to keep as much workforce out in the sites to keep those projects going and get them completed as soon as they're able to. Within the zoo program, this is the list of the pending projects that they have. They have about sixteen, seventeen million dollars that are, that's still remaining in their program. And as you'll see here in the next slide, this is a list of projects that they've completed, of some photos. So you see in this slide here how they're projecting to complete out the program. Again, this next fiscal year, they're going to focus on animal safety related projects as well as existing facilities where we need to upgrade the facility itself. And then moving into fiscal year twenty-two, same thing, fiscal year twenty-three is when you start to see the major projects that will be the Komodo Dragon as well as the Penguin Exhibit towards the end. Those facilities will bring in additional animals to, to, to the zoo and thus bring additional operational costs and thus why they were pushed to twenty-three and twenty-four. The investment interest, it's next several slides. You know, as, as a program, from a program management standpoint, wanted to give you some background as to, as to how we run the projects. We've been very fortunate to execute the capital program over the past three years. We've been very effective in that we're able to complete projects and be able to take the savings of those projects so that we can support other budgets and, and projects as we need them so that we can continue to push those projects out. We do obviously have controls in place, scope and schedule. And you'll sometimes hear us in community meetings, talk to community about when they're asking for additional amenities or extending the limits. We, we do, we're very disciplined in, in trying to hold that scope because that's tied to the money that's been approved. And so if we're designing projects that are, that are going to take us out of budget, it becomes a real challenge to deliver projects. And I think the discipline that we've shown over the past three years has really allowed us to, to execute as effective as we have. We do projections as always. And it's worth mentioning that we work very closely with Robert and Nicole to identify the funds. We don't borrow all the money. When the funds are approved, we borrow the money when we need them. And that's where the cash flow and the projections of when we're going to need the money for each of the projects is critical so that we're able to minimize the impact to the tax rate as well as maximize the value of the money in that we have in the bank.
Now, Sam, if I could just make one point to that. So in addition to that, it's also having a really strong Office of the Comptroller and particularly our Treasury Department. So our Treasury Section within the Office of the Comptroller, we actually have the resources and staff in place right now that have the skills and the expertise to maximize our bond proceeds. And so really taking advantage of the investments, the type of investments we're doing, again, staying in compliance with our policy, but again constantly monitoring that on a daily basis. Again, in order to maximize the value from our, our bond proceeds.
And what's important to that is that, you know, we, over the past three years, we've completed almost two hundred projects in our community and that has allowed us, as I said, whether we have savings of thirty thousand dollars in one project or, or a hundred thousand in another, it quickly adds up and allows us to move additional projects into, into the, into the construction and ultimately into completion. It's reflected by the budget resolution where the city manager is authorized to move up to a million dollars of existing projects into other projects or to create new projects up to five hundred thousand dollars when needed. And this is typically associated with some, some kind of safety related work and that this would happen. And of course, budget transfer are reported to City Council through the reports from O M B. Within the investment policy that was approved by City Council through the various programs, Luis, Mayor, has really done a fantastic job and generated over ten million dollars over the past five years across all programs to include the Quality of Life. What, under the policy, what we can use the investment interest for is approved projects within each of the programs, meaning that if we have investment interest for Prop One of the Quality of Life, they can only be used for Prop One projects or to pay the debt on the Prop One issuance. It's, it's very important. That's why we're here in front of you today so that we can get, we're recommending approval to use this investment interest on various projects that you'll see here in the next couple of slides. Because we're able to move these projects along and, and again, meet the expectation of the community. What we're, what we have in front of you and what you see in the projects that'll go into detail is that we're looking to address emergency facility needs such as the humidifier at the Museum of History. We're also looking to add funds to address critical elements such as the Leo Councilary Pool. And then also thinking long-term, now that we've deferred some of these other projects, we want to make sure that we're strategic about how we use these dollars to be able to supplement those, those projects that have been deferred with the understanding that escalation will increase based on labor material costs over the next couple of years. What we have for you today is we have a balance of just over three and a half million dollars that's available in Prop One and Prop Two. We are asking that these funds be allocated through this resolution for facilities, Chaleo Sports Center HVAC System, the Hawkins Pool Roof, as well as the McKelligan Canyon Party Hall that's been shut down for structural issues. It's a great facility. That's definitely in need of, of repair to get that back open to the community. We are looking at the Museum of History humidifier and HVAC improvements. The Museum of Art Boilers, new replacement as well as additional HVAC modifications. We are looking at additional funds required for the Recreation Center, Flatfield over at Valle, Valle Bajo to address additional stone drainage improvements that are required in that area. Leo Councilary Pool improvements, again, the, almost three million dollars was approved as part of twenty-eighteen capital plan. We want to make sure that we're able to address the facility to the expectations of the community as well as addressing the, the mechanical systems throughout the facility. And then additional funds associated with the, with the libraries that are under design right now. It's about seven hundred thousand. Again, I think through part of the Quality of Life program and what we've done in other libraries throughout, the community is expecting, you know, brand new carpet, painting, those kinds of things, but we do have facility issues that we need to address as well. And this is a great opportunity for us to do that, to use this revenue that we can only use on these projects to be able to address those on these projects as well so that we don't have to come back to council and approve those through a subsequent capital program. That's pretty much the last slide is the recommendation of the resolution that was written to the record. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Representative Hernandez.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez, for a really comprehensive presentation. I, there was a slide nineteen. I'm curious, are those for, for the Children's Museum? The renderings there, are those actual renderings of what the exhibits will look like or are they just ideas of what it could look like?
So Representative Hernandez, this is from their website. They have not published the official ones yet. This is what we were able to publish publicly as part of their website. They are, they are working. As you know, myself and Tracy Jerome are part of the board. We have seen the renderings of the, the building themselves and then of course, the exhibit design and they're getting very closely to, to release those to the public. They're doing a lot of fundraising and that's important for, for them to be able to, to use those, those renderings as they look to generate the money that they're required to as part of the project, the twenty million dollars that they're going to be generating.
I was just really excited to, to see a sneak peek. So, I mean, it looks really neat. I'm really excited about this project. So I was just trying, trying to get some insider information about what this is going to really look like. Okay, so, so let's talk about the three point four nine two million dollar. So obviously, the, the way I understand is that it's the interest that's earned, that's essentially sitting in the bank right now. So we're earning interest off the Quality of Life dollars, correct?
That is correct for Prop One and Prop Two.
Correct. Okay. And so I went back to look at the December nineteen, twenty-nine, excuse me, the December ninth, twenty-nineteen presentation. And I saw a lot of these projects were there on the capital plan. Specifically, the Hawkins Pool HVAC. And so I'm trying to like, I'm confused because there's so many actions that are taking place. Are these being issued with CO? Some of these projects are being issued with COs? Or is this one hundred percent Quality of Life funds?
So Representative, so there's some issues, as you know, specifically in the Hawkins Pool Roof. And what you saw in the presentation in April, that we're going to be, the risk don't have that twenty-twenty capital plan is very limited on cash. And we're, you know, we're not anticipating to be able to borrow a lot of dollars under that program here for the next couple of years, but we do need to address that facility. And this is a great opportunity to move this project up in that we have funds available for us to, to start addressing that roof. Obviously balancing it out with, with the capital plan as we move forward. So that's, that's what you see. We, we're trying to be strategic on, on what we need to do. And so that, and with the limited dollars at the end of the day. And so these dollars are already in the bank with twenty-twenty capital plan. We will have to borrow dollars and as, as I stated, it's been stated multiple times, which is not going to be able to borrow money in fiscal year twenty-two. So being able to tap into these dollars will allow us to start the work on that roof immediately. And what that will cause, it'll be a dominant effect, obviously, you know. And so if, if these projects, we're not trying to double dip, but we're trying to make use of those dollars that are now available. And so subsequent modifications to those plans are anticipated based on, on what we're able to accomplish with these funds.
Okay, so. And, and you're right. So that's what I'm trying to kind of flow with. I'm trying to understand the flow of the, the funding. So now dollars that were already earmarked for Quality of Life, that was three point four million dollars. So what, what I perceive is that, okay, so there, then there's a reduction in the debt that we're going to issue in the amount of three point four. Is that correct?
Yes, because part of, you know, what, what we have done, I think, over the past three years, we have not come to council, with the exception of the water parks, we have not come to, come, come to council to ask for additional supplemental dollars for projects as we get them, as we get them out the door. You know, obviously this, if we didn't have these funds available, you know, we'll be in front of you asking to, for additional supplemental authority to be able to, to get these projects funded and into construction. Again, I think we're just being strategic on how we're able to use the existing resources that we have to, to execute the capital program.
Okay, so if it's not going to be paid through debt issuance through CO, it's not going to be paid through the Quality of Life funding that was approved in two thousand and two. It's going to be paid exclusively with the interest earned. Now, does anything change with the total allotments, the total budgets that have been allocated to the Quality of Life bond or to the CO issuance? Like, I'm just trying to understand, like, do, do those budgets get impacted like the total amount that we've approved at all? Or are you looking for those savings to reallocate to other programs, to other projects?
So again, I think if, if I can just break down the answer a little bit and I want to make sure I get this, this answer right and explain it properly. These dollars, the, the request that we have here today, for example, the Museum of History humidified for a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, that was not budgeted or scoped in, into the capital, into the Quality of Life program. You know, what, what was scoped into the Quality of Life programs was like remodeling, those kinds of things that, you know, the, the public wants to see. They don't want to, you know, it's important that they know that we're doing HVAC system, but at the same time, that's not what they're expecting to see. They're expecting to see some kind of improvement with the dollars that they approve with this program. Through the design and the evaluation, for example, in the, in the Museum of Art, we had a study to look at all the HVAC improvement, all the HVAC systems, and they came back with recommendations that we need to address. We're able to leverage these resources to be able to accomplish that in lieu of bringing back another project to your council for approval that will be funded through COs.
Okay, I, I totally misunderstood from the beginning and you helped clarify that. So, okay, I, yeah, I don't want you to take any more time. I want to be sensitive to everyone's time, but I, I completely understand now what the objective is. It was a little hard. When you gave specific examples, it, it was, I was, I was able to understand better, but thank you. You know, I have always been really concerned with money sitting in, in the bank and earning interest. But in, in the time of a pandemic, we, we need to be fluid and, and respond very quickly. I think that the, that the strategy works for now, but I think long term, we really needed to think about either not issuing the debt because, so the money's not sitting in the bank. Or, you know, really have a, like a solid plan on initiating these projects, but right now it's so fluid. So I, I, I totally agree and I'm happy to support this, but I just think long term, we really need to think about this strategy. I've mentioned this before. It just doesn't make sense that, you know, we're not using those dollars now to issue those projects, but it's different in this time. So I, I think that, you know, there's, there's valid reason to, to this approach now. But I think in the future, we really just need to think about, you know, should we be issuing that debt? We should really focus on the project. And I know, Sam, you've done a tremendous job at doing that. I, I've seen dramatic changes. You know, just from three years ago to now. So I really thank you for, you know, trying to stick to a project timeline. And I know things take long time, like procurements and finding contractors and all that. I just think that we need to find a way to not put, put these dollars in the bank or not issuing them until we're ready to use them. But I, I hear what the objective is and thank you for the clarification.
Yeah. And if I can add, Representative Hernandez, this is really the product of, of the big issuance that was done in two thousand and seventeen. Because I believe, Robert, correct me if I'm wrong, in the city took advantage of very low interest rates back in that year. And so there was a lot of money that was issued and borrowed for the street program, for Quality of Life, especially Prop Two. And obviously, we haven't been able to move a lot of, forward with that project, specifically the MPC. And so again, I think if you look at what we're doing now and how we're projecting and doing the cash flows, and you'll see that reflecting the capital plans. We're, we're working really closely and we've done a really good job, I believe, over the past three years and projecting when we're going to need these dollars and how we're going to be spending. So.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. That's fair. Thank you.
It was in twenty sixteen, Sam, when they did the, it was two hundred million for the Quality of Life back in twenty sixteen. It was to take advantage of the low interest rates at the time.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah. And just to add on to the clarification, we determined when we came in, when I became mayor, that we were not going to issue bonds unless they were absolutely needed or there was an interest rate environment that demanded that we take advantage of it. So what we've got here is excess interest to be able to pay for operations and maintenance of a number of facilities. And I compliment you, Sam, on that. Mayor Protem?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. And thank you, Sam, for, for, for the update here. The, regarding the NIP projects, what is the process for communicating with constituents for applicants who were successfully rewarded these to make sure that their design is understood?
This, this year, round four, I'm going to go to that slide real quick. This year, round four was a little bit different than the previous three rounds in that there was a lot of public engagement with the community, the neighborhood associations as part of that process. In that we actually had design workshops for, for the neighborhood associations so that they could understand, so that we can help them clearly identify what the scopes are or what they were trying to accomplish for their community and that we can refine the scope even before it was priced and before it was approved by council. So we did a lot of really good work through community and human development with Nicole's team as well as parks and rec because a lot of these NIP programs are for, for parks, facilities. To make sure that the, again, that the community really understood. facilities, to make sure that the, again, that the community really understood what they wanted, and that we could help them scope out and understand, include the critical elements that they were looking for. The outreach and the deployment of it, obviously, we're doing the coordination as we deploy the projects to be able to reach out to them, to let them know that we're working on them, and that we're, that we're, that they're under execution now, at this point.
So you're reaching out to to each individual neighborhood association during this, during the implementation and construction phase, to make sure that everything is clearly understood?
Well, again, it's the, it's, it's, the scope has been very well-defined, and it's been approved by council, and this is where I go back to the the, my initial statement about being disciplined, about what's included in the scope, so that we keep it within budget, and so it's important for us to to make sure that that if a neighborhood association comes in and wants to add additional elements or modify the scope that was approved by council, that we're, that we stay disciplined from that aspect of it, but still, obviously, working with them, because ultimately, these projects are being done for the community, and it's, and they're gonna be the ones that are gonna be enjoying it, and so, yeah, I I think, just making sure that we we execute these and that we notify them, that's, that's the, that's the intent, Mayor Protem.
In regards towards the, I guess, the, the last question, well, two other questions. One is relating to the last slide about the additional funding for some of the library improvements, specifically Doris Van Doren, can you talk about what those additional improvements are? Because we had a conversation before that the HVAC system wasn't going to be addressed, and I can tell you that two separate times that I've done the storytelling at that, the HVAC system leaked onto the carpet and and near children who were at the storytelling. There also was was spoken to me by by staff that the HVAC system didn't really, turned on and off, but it didn't really change the temperature there, and so there's a clear issue with the HVAC system at Doris Van Doren that goes beyond just the the roof, and so I'm curious if if those additional funds are going to be addressing that.
Yeah, I can't tell you specifically off the top of my head, specifically what's gonna include it, but it is going to be looking to address the roof, that were no leaks in that facility, and obviously, the the HVAC has been assessed as well, so they, whatever was recommended from the consultant will be addressed as part of this project. That's the reason you see the request here today for seven hundred thousand dollars to supplement the library projects that we got underway.
Okay, perhaps we can get briefed about that, about what's changing there. And then the final issue I have is that, you know, ecotourism, getting people out, you know, we have the Live Act of El Paso project, you know, we've, we've invested on paved trails and trailheads here, you know, our strategic plan clearly brings up developing ecotourism in our community, as well as using ecotourism as a, as an economic development catalizer, and that's, that's taken directly from our our twenty-five and twenty-five language. I'm just concerned about the deferring of some of these projects, the paved trails, the Mountain River Trail, that that we don't send mixed messages to our our community, and so, I don't know if you can talk about kind of why we're, we're choosing to defer those projects for for a year, as opposed to some of the other projects? What was the thought behind that from staff?
So we looked at, Mayor Protem, we we looked at specifically, I'm gonna go to that slide here, these projects, these are new facilities that we'd be looking to defer, and so you may say that, you know, a trail may not have a lot of operational maintenance costs, but we do have to put a vendor out there to keep, clean up trash, to clean up weeds, to to keep it presentable as to what the community's gonna expect, and when you have so many trails, I can't find it at the top here, but when you have so many trails, we do have to make sure that we factor in the cost of operational cost, and and the the projects that we're, we're, we're electing to move forward are projects that we already have existing facilities, for example, the libraries, we're already paying the water bill, we're already paying the electricity bill, it doesn't make sense for us to to hold on to the design for a couple of years, when the facility is already there, and and we can take advantage and of of these limited usage times to to get those projects into construction. The the trails, we're, as I stated, will will create an additional operational cost, and you just heard the presentation from Tracy Jerome and Robert about how we lack those those funds at this point. The trailheads, if they're tied to another project, for example, the Palisades Trailhead that's being done with PSB, you know, we're, we're not gonna hold that up, because holding it up is just gonna be more costlier for us, even if if it's gonna increase the operational cost on that particular project, I think it's a, it's a very well-calculated risk for us to to move that project forward, because the capital savings that that would entail doing it with PSB is is more advantageous to us as a city. So, again, we're, we're not blindly going about this, if there's, if there's a logical sense for us to move some of these projects forward, we're moving them forward, but if it's a brand-new facility that's gonna generate a operational cost, it's, that's the recommendation that we're making to council, is that we don't have the operational dollars to even operate what we already have, why add to the system?
I I understand that, I just wanted, you know, just to be on the record, that that I think these projects are important, again, not important just to Representative Schwartzman or my district, but it's, it's something that we codified in our strategic plan, item one point two, catalyze ecotourism as an economic development driver focused on El Paso's unique authentic urban desert identity, and these paved trails and these other opportunities really lend to that fact, so I just wanted to be on the record that I think it's important that, you know, we look at at these projects and understand what you're saying, you know, once, once we buy the horse, we have to feed it, I get it, just I think these projects are important, so, I look forward to following up with you on Doris Van Doren, and thanks again.
Thank you.
Representative Vanello.
Um, Sam, for clarification, what Recreation Center Flatfields is being requested?
This is the Valle Bajo, the Flatfields, there's a flatfield associated with the Valle Bajo Community Center that's that's being constructed on the site, and the, there's a lot of drainage issues that need to be addressed.